Okay, Ryan. All good? Okay. All right, good morning, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Washto County Board of County Commissioners meeting for June 28th, 2022. I apologize for the tardiness. We had a little tiny bit of a technical difficulty. We will start with a salute to the flag. Ms. Cindy Martinez, would you lead us today?
Hello. Veteran, cancer, loo, ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Von Hartung Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill Vice Chair.
Here.
Bob Lucy.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
President.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney Nathan Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasini, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, will you take us into item number three?
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, would you call...I can do this. Would you call public comment?
Certainly. Elise Weatherly.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly, Sun Valley resident, hoping soon to be able to leave that community. Today, I wanted to talk to you about false testimony and false charges. Did you know that giving false testimony is against both the laws of man and the laws of God? I was just reminded of that the other day. So, I wanted to let you know there's something that the Washto County Sheriff's Office might want to consider changing. My neighbors called up a few years ago screaming on the phone, they were on each phone, accusing someone in my household of breaking their window. So what we did was, like the detectives, we investigated it. Come to find out, they were going to open a citation against us. The officer that came was a lady that I used to work with, the Eldorado, so she knows pretty much I'm not a liar. She questioned the person that was alleged to have done that. And I was waiting for the citation to come in so I could have my day in court. Well, guess what? The charges were dropped and I wasn't notified, so I was on pins and needles waiting for the day in court because I had absolute proof that if somebody broke their window, it wasn't us. But I was not allowed to have my day in court for that. Well, now I've got some charges against me by the Homeowners Association, which ticks me off because I don't slander, I don't lie, I don't lie and cheat and stuff like that. But it will give us an opportunity to present changes to the NRS 116 statutes to the state of Nevada. So while I'm being slapped with a $1,000 fine because I didn't go into the meeting they said I had to go into when I said, "No, I don't meet with anybody without a mediator anymore, and I don't go by your schedule, you should go by mine." So all these things are going to be really, really fun to present to the court. One of the charges against me is funny because I misused this group text. I've never even been set up with a group text. Am I losing anybody's attention or interest? So I have never known what a group text was. Come to find out that the manager that insisted on outlook was the one that set up the text. So I said, "Well, accountant me, why wasn't I informed? Why wasn't I aware of this? Why didn't I consent?" So what I've got is some really interesting reading on that text file because one of the City of Sparks bailiff said, "Document it." So I went through and for hours, every day, I documented it. I'm going, "I'm not the one that's being mean." Well, gosh, the other two guys are on there being mean, calling me in a cat fight and also calling me names like I've got some mental defect of things. I'm going, "Well, I'm angry. Is that a mental defect? I'm a little bitter. Is that a mental defect? Or is that just something that I need to take charge of?" By the way, for those of you who care, since Peter was an apostle to the Jews, why is the foundation of the Catholic Church? Thanks, guys.
Cindy Martinez.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, Mr. District Attorney, Madam Clerk. For the record, Cindy Martinez, resident of Washto County. A couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention, or actually be a reminder, because I've been absent for a while and I haven't forgotten, and I just wanted to remind you. One is let's be mindful of the financial fiscal cliff that we're facing. That looks different to everybody. I was watching a podcast this morning pertaining to that. Very interesting, I'm not going to go into that. And last week, Washto County Health District approved the vaccinations for children from six months to four years old, FDA said four, five years old. That's concerning because of the apparent non-efficacy, actually, for children that aren't really susceptible to COVID-19. I'm not a scientist, I don't play one here either. You know my thoughts about that. And then, subsequent to that also, as I ask that this board consider developing and passing a resolution to ban mandatory COVID-19 vaccinations or any vaccination, ban vaccine passports and/or any means or method of verification that would infringe on privacy and medical privacy of people. We must be mindful that bodily autonomy and medical privacy is paramount to freedom, and this is one of the next fronts in human rights that we need to be mindful of. Thank you.
Pam Roberts.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Pam Roberts. For the record, I reside in the Warm Springs area, District Five. I'm here for a couple of things to say. First, I would like to speak in support of Agenda Item 7, H1, which is the appointment of Mary Ann McCauley as the District Five member of the Senior Services Advisory Board. I am Vice Chair of that board. She's been serving as an alternate, and she is an amazing candidate for this board, and so I'm very grateful that she's being considered. I would also like to acknowledge all the board members for their patience as they have listened to hours and hours of public comment from constituents who continue to erroneously allege wide-scale election fraud. As a former constituent of Commissioner Lucy, I would like to thank Commissioner Lucy for his service. Although we don't always agree on issues, you have always been polite and respectful and worked with your fellow commissioners in a nonpartisan manner. I would also like to thank Deanna Spicula, I'm not probably pronouncing her name wrong right, for her 15 years of service. She was extremely helpful and fair dealing with the ballot initiatives and questions for an unincorporated town in the Palomino Valley area. I would like to thank the county manager, Eric Brown, who I believe has been responsive to many of my complaints and other people who have complained about having better communication between the county staff and the many constituents in this county. A great example is the continuing evolving development of the neighborhood meeting process. Not too long ago, I was complaining at a planning commission about a neighborhood meeting that did not get notified. I felt as broad as it needed to be, and now I'm seeing that I'm receiving neighborhood meeting announcements for things that I might be interested in. Maybe it's not even in my district, but because I care not just about Warm Springs area, not just about Palomino Valley, or even the specific plan area that's within my valley, I care about the whole county. I'm interested in what's happening in the whole county, which I believe every one of these commissioners also believes. Yes, you were elected by your constituents. There's no question you have a responsibility to them, but you have a responsibility to the entire county. And this is just one of those times where I'm going to thank you. I'm sure I'll be here another time where I might be a little critical, but today, I'm thanking you for your hard work.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mark Newman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for having me. First of all, I'd like to put on my Sun Valley HOA hat, thank Mrs. Commissioner Jung for her services, for helping out with the Sun Valley swimming pool and the cleanup. That looked really good when it was all done, got a lot of compliments on that. And I'd also like to thank both Herman and Jung for attending our Commissioner cab meetings. Okay, that hat off. Now I'm speaking to you just as a Washto County resident, Sun Valley resident. I'd like to speak on item 25, which is going to be the Chocolate Drive, which is on the far northwest side of Sun Valley. Right now, it's 45.1 acres, a suburban residential, which is basically three houses per acre. And the developer from Indiana wants to change it to, from the planning commission to now, it was high-density urban, now he just wants to go high-density suburban, which is 70 units per acre per the Sun Valley master plan. I wish all of you would please agree with the Washto County Planning Commission on a no vote on this. Sun Valley is stretched to its limits right now on its infrastructure and the roads. Our fire department alone, the Chucky Meadows Fire Department in Sun Valley, received 210 calls last month alone, which is the highest in Washto County. We really don't need high-density apartments way off of Sun Valley Drive. As it is now, if you go down Sun Valley Drive, right off of First Street, they're starting a development of nearly 500 more apartments, which are all going to be done through the federal government of HUD and also the Reno Housing, so that we get more low-income apartments at the south end, which is close to Sun Valley Drive. There's apartments on Sun Valley, El Rancho. If you go up Sun Valley Drive, there's apartments on both east and west side of Sun Valley Drive. Which is a great program, which is the Step Two Program. It's a wonderful program. And if you keep going up, there's more off of Scottsdale Road. We don't need more apartments. You can call any apartment complex in Washto County, and they have immediate occupancy. You try to find a house in Sun Valley, especially for our working-class people, all of our construction workers, warehouse workers, everybody that works needs a house to move into. But most of them, you go anywhere that they're developing houses, they're way out of the pricing line of the working-class community. And Sun Valley is zoned for, basically, a blue-collar community. And where they want to put these apartments at, over off of Chocolate Drive, way out on the northwest side of Sun Valley, is away from Sun Valley Drive, trying to get through residential neighborhoods, it's just a bad idea for apartments. It really needs to remain the low-density suburban and stay houses in that area. Thank you very much for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
Kenji Otto.
Good morning. This morning, I'm going to be...I've also put in for item 22, which has to do with the vicious dog item. Basically, I wanted to point out that the proposals, I have some issues with them in regards to infringing on the rights of the property owners. And I've gone through the ordinances of the animal services and noted that there are several cases where property ownership is infringed upon. And I'd like to ask that in the ordinance that may be rewritten, that NRS 202500 be referenced to ensure that the individuals that rewrite this are referencing the state NRS and that the county is adhering to that NRS. Because like on item two of the proposed, it says, "Killed or inflicted substantial bodily harm upon human," in parentheses, "on or off owner's premises." I believe that's a violation of a property owner's rights. I don't believe the government has a right to be dictating what happens on somebody's property. And that justification of my viewpoint is that you give exemptions to a variety of, or is proposing exemptions to a variety of locations, which are all businesses. Whatever happens on a person's property, it's their business, and if they want to have their animal put down or whatever, then they should be the ones who are judging that, not a government official of any kind. And that also, another item that I would propose is that somewhere in the ordinance that it be indicated that no trespassing signs, as per NRS, that no trespassing signs are an indication that somebody, if they're animal and they go onto that property, they're trespassing, which doesn't make a dog vicious if that dog is protecting that property. So with that said, I'll finish up. I only got a couple of seconds, but I'll continue on when the item comes up. Thank you.
Nicholas St. John.
For the record, my name is Nicholas St. John. Please put these comments on the record. Last time I was here, I asked you guys if you had received my provisional voting anomalies report. You guys refused to respond during the public comment, and so I gave you an option to respond during item four, which is when you guys could comment. And again, you refused to answer me. One of the things that we have been asking for is for you to put on the agenda a resolution to ban vaccine passports. We have been asking for that for a long time. We've seen nothing from you. Same thing about putting on the agenda. We demand that you put on the agenda a resolution or an item to discuss making Washto County a Second Amendment sanctuary county. This morning, I came through the metal detector. I believe that is a violation of my Fourth Amendment rights. If I did not submit to that, then they would not allow me to come in here. I demand that you remove the metal detector. It is unconstitutional. It violates both the U.S. Constitution and the Nevada Constitution for being unreasonably searched. It's only here during your meetings. So that's harassment. I have a criminal complaint that will be being submitted. So this is for you, Nate. It's going to be coming to the DA's office, going to the foreman of the grand jury. It's completely illegal. It's a violation of a number of our NRS codes as well. And so I'm demanding that you remove that and that it's taken out before the next meeting. I finally have a meeting with Manager Eric Brown. I've been asking for that meeting since April 18th. I finally, with some pressure, last week, got confirmation that on July 6th, I will finally be able to meet with you. Thank you very much. In that meeting, I will be discussing the provisional voting anomalies, errors, and irregularities. That document shows without a shadow of a doubt that there was serious problems with the provisional voting records of the 2020 general election. People keep saying there's been no proof. That document is proof. There is no way that that number, which I gave you guys before, a report of 2,950 people registered, same-day registration in Coal Springs, 2,950. That's one every...at the last of the day, it was one every 12 seconds. That's not a physical possibility, guys. So I demand that an investigation be opened up according to the document report that I gave you. If anyone went through the metal detector and wants a criminal complaint, I have that as well.
Irene Payne.
Welcome, Ms. Payne.
Thank you. So, good morning, Commissioners and Manager Brown. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. Irene Payne for the record. Before I start, I would like to thank you Commissioners for everything that you do for our community, particularly Commissioner Lucy, who is my representative. Thank you so much. We really appreciate you. I'm here today to talk about item number 17, which is appointment of a person to represent the community on the Washto County Advisory Board to manage wildlife. As you may know, I have submitted my name for consideration, and if appointed, I would bring not only my extensive professional knowledge and experience of marketing, communications, and community engagement, but will also bring a balanced and thoughtful approach. The experience I've had as serving as your representative on the Washto County Regional Animal Services Advisory Board will also assist me. And while I'm on that topic, I know Ms. Scholl, who is the executive director, is making a presentation later on on the agenda regarding the revision to the Dangerous and Violent Dog Code. Ms. Scholl and her team at Washto County Regional Animal Services do a first-class job in often very difficult physical and emotional situations. And honestly, I'm honored to work with them on the advisory board. And on behalf of Chair Duer and myself, or we, would ask you to consider the amendments which clear up the code and are sorely needed. Anyhow, I do hope you will give my application serious consideration to the Wildlife Advisory Board, and if elected, I will endeavor to represent you and our community with passion, commitment, and dedication. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
There's nobody else signed in for this item.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will close item number three, public comment, general public comment, and we will take it to item number four, Mr. Manager.
Item four is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have any such items?
I do. Mr. Chair, I have one item, which is to point out that although it's on the consent calendar, item seven, consent agenda, item 7G3 is a groundbreaking agreement between, that is, culmination of collaboration between Washto County, the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, the school district, and the libraries. And as a result of these agencies coming together along with the State of Nevada's Office for Science, Innovation, and Technology, or OSIT, we have determined a way to bring broadband for the first time to Gerlach. And we're doing that with the assistance of the tribe, which has fiber between I-80 and Nixon. They're allowing us to use that fiber to get to Gerlach, and we're building the remainder of the stretch from Nixon to Gerlach. Total cost of construction is estimated at about $2.4 million. But you will see this item actually has a $12,000 expense to the county, and that is because we've been able to use FCC E-rate funding, which is available to all schools and libraries, and because frankly, the State of Nevada stepped up to pay the remaining portion. So it's a momentous day. I just wanted to point that out. Our CIO, Bazzad Zabaniyan, is with us today. I would like to thank him as well as Jeff Scott at the libraries, and again, our friends at the tribe. We will have Brian Mitchell come perhaps in August, Mr. Chair. He was not available today. I was going to embarrass him. Let me just also say that we're not finished with our broadband aspirations for Washto County. In fact, tomorrow, we're convening a work group of the agencies I mentioned, NDOT and others, to look at what other broadband unserved areas exist in the county that we could use either infrastructure money for or other funding sources. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so I will take that, that you do not want to pull item 7G3 and have a discussion?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that assessment and the background on that. I appreciate that. Commissioners, I have Vice Chair Hill signed in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let the board know that Washto, Reno, and Sparks were awarded Bike Friendly America Workshop. That should be happening here soon, and our region has come together on that, as well as RTC. So I look forward to seeing what they recommend for our community. I think that that's a really exciting push for folks to get out on their bikes, especially with gas as high as it is. We had the Mobility Hub Committee for TTD last night, and it was decided that the Washto Transportation Study shall be extended until July 15th. Folks can log on to washtocounty.gov to find the study and fill that out. You have another 15 days or so. And then, on Incline Village and Crystal Bay, on our Citizen Advisory Board, we have an opening. So if you're interested in getting involved at a higher level at Washto County, I hope that you'll join the cab. So those are my announcements. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair, Commissioner Lucy, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Chairman. I do appreciate it. Wanted to first start off by saying congratulations to the Reno Rodeo on another successful 10-day event at our wonderful Reno Livestock Event Center. That was 102nd annual rodeo that we've had here. And I think people don't realize how fortunate we are in northern Nevada to have an event like the Reno Rodeo and the events that we do have. Many places, you'll get a two- or three-day rodeo. We're very lucky to have a 10-day rodeo with concerts and all kinds of fun stuff. So wonderful organization that continues to give back, not only to the community, but in many different ways, not just through the event itself, but through its philanthropic nature. So I want to congratulate all of the staff at the Reno Rodeo and those participants that came and visited and participated with us. Secondly, Chairman, if we can have a discussion, I'd like to continue to have an update from the manager on where we are with the P-25 radios and kind of get where that sits, and hopefully have some discussions on that. And then, obviously, in the next couple of months, if we could have a discussion about board assignments prior to my departure, I would like to make some of those adjustments to the boards that I sit on so that the new Commissioners can have those opportunities to get situated with those organizations. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Jung, I have you signed in next.
Yeah, can we have those board assignments next meeting, please? I think this needs to be accelerated, not decelerated, and I agree with Mr. Commissioner Lucy that I'd like to see this on the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that leaves me. I have several things. I had an opportunity to attend the Children's Cancer Foundation Take a Swing fundraiser. It was a huge success, and I wanted to thank everyone who went to that fundraiser. It is such a great cause to help families whose children have cancer. I can tell you, it's difficult when you have a sick child and you don't know where to turn, and these folks are there to help them. And so it was really an amazing event, and it was highly successful. I also had an opportunity to attend for us the Nevada Veterans Memorial Plaza Dinner fundraiser. We are very close to having the Nevada Veterans Memorial Plaza completed in Sparks over at the Marina, and it promises to be a wonderful, wonderful memorial to the fallen veterans in the state of Nevada. And so if you have not had an opportunity to go over and have a look at what's going on, I would encourage you to do that. And again, I want to thank all the people who were at the dinner for their support. It was a very, very successful event. Finally, Mr. Manager, we asked some time ago to have a discussion with the sheriff about catalytic converter thefts in Spanish Springs. I know the sheriff came out with a program where you could have your catalytic converters painted and et cetera, but what I'd like to do is I'd like to have him... I'd like to do is I'd like to have him or a representative from the office, whomever, come and give us a presentation on how that would be accomplished. And then hopefully we can get them scheduled at the Citizens Advisory Board as well so that they can talk about that, not just in Spanish Springs, but at every Citizens Advisory Board throughout the county. So it, I mean, we just, we, we need to get them making the rounds. That's all I have right now. Commissioner Jung, I see that you've signed in again.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay.
It made me think of something that I really like to see on this agenda. And I'm not sure if it's regional planning who would do the presentation, but you mentioning Sparks Veterans Plaza, but also just the wonderful things of all the infill that both Sparks and Reno are doing. I mean, they're really doing the heavy lift around here. Every turn or corner I turn around, there's a, a new beautiful building for multifamily. And I would love to have a presentation either from Reno and Sparks or regional, who maybe could speak for all of them, of what type of impact of infill they've done to preserve a lot of people who choose to live outside of the McCarran Ring. And those are not easy projects to get through. We think that we have it rough up here. Those projects are so hard to get done, so hard to get the entitlement, so hard to get people to refrain from second guessing what this might mean for the community. And I, I just, I believe they deserve a giant round of applause because they have done so great at their downtowns. And the Sparks Downtown, I am so proud of them. I think it looks beautiful. And it has turned into a real city center, which by the way, I mean, if you're paying attention to pricing, Sparks is the hit place to be now downtown. That's all, young, upwardly mobile professionals who, that's where they can afford it this time. Maybe a condo or an apartment downtown Sparks. And even further out, which you don't need to bring them to our commission, is firmly, is heating up their little downtown because the artists and the creators and the people that can't afford the rents or the home prices here are moving there. So while we don't love the gentrification and the skyrocketing prices, people find a way too. And that is where you're seeing this livelihood in these downtown corridors. So I would love to have a eagle's view of what Reno and Sparks specifically has done in this difficult time and in a time with so much demand and a lot of people activated that just say no. So I, I think we need to see that as commissioners. I used to get a reminder when everything went on, on in Reno and Sparks. I don't get that anymore. So everything is, every day is a new exploration for me and a new adventure to see a new building up. But I think it looks great. I love it. I believe it's progress. And we should celebrate them. Maybe at our joint meeting to have that to kick it off. It might, might help with some setting the stage for what we're trying to accomplish as a region here in northern Nevada. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, Vice Chair Hill, I have you signed in again.
Thank you. I just, I know that we've been so busy with the election, but I'm hoping we can bring back our rules. I know we had discussed getting that back on a future agenda. And I think that if, if we could get that on sometime in the next few months, that would be very good for us to discuss. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And then I, and I was, I neglected to mention probably one of the biggest supporters of this. And of course, I said, take a swing at childhood cancer. This happened at Greater Nevada Field, and Greater Nevada Field was a participant in this, and it could not have happened without them. And it was just a, it was an incredible venue. So I wanted to thank the Greater Nevada Field and the management and the owners and the Greenskeeper. I mean, everybody, everybody was there. It was really, it was really quite phenomenal. Okay, that takes us now to item number five. Mr. Manager.
Item five is the presentation, excuse me, from Julie Reagan, Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, and Dr. Gregory Miller, Center for Responsible Travel on TRPA's Regional Transportation Program, and ongoing discussion with private and public agencies regarding regional transit in the Tahoe Basin.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I am Julie Reagan of the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. I'd like to thank you and Vice Chair Hill and members of this body and the staff and public for having me here today. It has been a number of years since a representative from TRPA has been before you, and I'm so pleased to be back, back in real life. Dr. Miller is in Washington, DC, and unfortunately, was not able to be here today to participate. And I will be representing the team from the Center for Responsible Travel and what we're calling the Core Team of Destination Stewardship at Lake Tahoe, where we'll be talking about transportation and many of the other issues that we're facing. And I do really want to thank Vice Chair Hill for her leadership in connecting Washoe County to these initiatives that are underway, have been underway for some years, but we're taking it to a level with something called Destination Stewardship. That is a new term of art for essentially saying, how do we avoid loving a place to death? Almost like, be careful if you hug someone too tightly. We have to take care of Lake Tahoe. And we've had exceeding pressures in, in the natural resources and on our communities in the last few years as we've worked through the pandemic, as folks have flocked to the great outdoors to be outside and to enjoy nature. But we do have a finite resource, and that's the whole idea behind taking care of Tahoe and what I'd like to share with you in just a few minutes today. As you know, Tahoe is a busy place. We have an estimated 15 million annual visitors. And think of that in comparison to a place that many of you probably have experienced, like Yosemite National Park. Yosemite has about three times less the amount of visitors. In a land area, that's three times larger than the Tahoe Basin. And we have a very small year-round population of less than 70,000. That's base and wide, both states. And of course, our charge at TRPA through an interstate compact between Nevada and California is to harmonize the economy of tourism with the natural resources that we all want to protect because we all share the goal of protecting the lake. But when you have these kinds of strains and stresses, it's a challenge. And so what I'm going to talk to you about today is our latest initiative to balance and to harmonize some of these pressures. Tourism will always be the economic engine that drives Tahoe, but in the last 10 or 15 years, we've really transitioned from more of a gaming-based economy to an outdoor recreation-based economy, similar to what northern Nevada has as well. And so that is really where a lot of these new challenges have arisen. So we've gotten a group together around Destination Stewardship, and we've set out a purpose statement to really look at how we manage the resource in a way that respects our local economies, protects our local neighborhoods, and also honors our precious Lake Tahoe, which is irreplaceable, one of the most spectacular places on the planet. And, and I know that all of you share that, as we have witnessed in your commitment to the lake over the years. Something called responsible tourism has been emerging. I was invited to speak at a conference back in Washington, DC, a number of years ago, when the term over tourism started to happen before the pandemic, particularly places in Europe like Venice, Barcelona, Amsterdam, South America, Machu Picchu, places all over the world were experiencing record travel. With the advent of your cell phone, when you can book a trip in about two minutes, and an Airbnb, or through TripAdvisor, whatever it might be, people can go places. Air travel is expensive, and so pressures were emerging in really large destinations. So this was a topic that was discussed on World Tourism Day at George Washington University in Washington, DC, with experts from around the globe, to say, how can we have solutions? And transportation is a key solution in this Destination Stewardship area. And so we have a number of initiatives in Tahoe, including transportation, sustainable funding, looking at regional trails, not just paved trails and off-road trails, but also dirt trails, mountain biking trails, and connecting a circumnavigation opportunity around the lake. Also, the Tahoe Prosperity Center is a nonprofit, which Commissioner Hill serves as part of that leadership, looking at how can we diversify our economy? Of course, tourism will always be the driver, but are there ways that we can have location-neutral businesses and other ways to diversify so we are not so susceptible to such boom and bust periods, whether it be a pandemic or whether it be wildfire, which we saw last year when our whole community had to be evacuated from the Caldor Fire and the smoke impact shut down many businesses. So there are a lot of issues embedded in this, and they connect. And I'm going to try to connect the dots for you in just a few minutes here. Looking at outdoor recreation, no surprise to you, outdoor recreation in terms of a driver of our economy and our communities, it's here to stay. It's outpacing every estimate. All the industry associations are looking like this is not changing what we experienced in Tahoe and in other beautiful places around the country during the pandemic. People that perhaps might have gone to more urban recreation destinations, amusement parks, which were closed, started coming to the great outdoors, to go hiking, to go boating, to go to the beach. These are folks that weren't as familiar with some of the ethos, really, that we practice, like leave no trace and principles where you respect that local environment. And there are not enough staff to pick up all the trash on our national forest system lands or our state lands or public parks. So what we've learned in these last few years, particularly destination visitors, a very strong drive market, obviously, we are the backyard of northern Nevada and northern California, and we have an abundance of public lands. Almost 90% of the lands in Tahoe are public, whether it's the Forest Service, state parks, or local parks and recreation. So we have an obligation to make those lands open and accessible to the public. But at the same time, we're seeing increased pressures. We were aware of this some years back, going back six, seven years, we developed something called Take Care. We saw this coming. So we said, we need to do a better job to engage folks before they get to Tahoe and once they're there. So we have this incredibly funny campaign. It's takecaretahoe.org. I would encourage you to go online, look at some of the videos. Pet waste is a huge point of contention in our community. In Tahoe, we have a pretty small population of people, but I think there's about three dogs for every local in Tahoe. And then add to that the number of visitors, and then you have a dog waste issue. So if it's your dog, then it's your duty. That's my personal favorite of the whole campaign. But these are very funny, attention-getting ads. There are videos, there's social media. There actually are billboards with even some more serious messages related to wildfire. Wildfire is affecting all of us in this region. The smoke impacts alone were quite devastating for many vulnerable people in our community. So wildfire is top of mind for us this year. 90% of wildfires are human-caused. So we have the obligation to let our communities know we're in a wildfire danger zone. Please take great care, particularly in relation to smoking. It's 20 years since someone carelessly threw a cigarette out of the gondola going up the mountain at Heavenly Mountain Resort. It was July of 2002. And luckily, that fire was contained before it created challenges. But just last week, we celebrated the 15th anniversary of the Angora wildfire, which destroyed 255 homes in Tahoe. And then last year, the Caldor Fire, which burned 10,000 acres in the basin, but did not, we did not lose a life or a structure in that fire. So that fire being one of many issues that we're working on. But we do have an active campaign to educate our community members before they come up to stay in hotels, with property managers at rentals. And these are some of the things that we ask folks to do to take care of Tahoe before they get there and while they're in town. However, issues persist. Despite these efforts with Take Care, we've still seen trash on the beach. We have illegal campfires, invasive species. Luckily, no new invasive species have entered the lake in terms of boats because of our rigorous inspection program. But we have had a handful of boats that have arrived with quagga mussels, which are an invasive mussel that could devastate our lake and our ecosystem. And so we're on the front line of that, and we must continue to educate our communities. I wanted to contrast those challenges with these access-for-all programs. The State of Nevada with a shared stewardship agreement with public land management agencies. And on the California side, access-for-all is a huge priority to get people outside. Nature as medicine, enjoying our, our right as public, as citizens of our public lands. So in terms of managing the resource, we have to continue to work towards solutions. Because what happens, when we get to a tipping point, our local residents are crying foul. And when we have millions of people entering the Lake Tahoe Basin, and we see tourists go away at the entry points, I believe there was a protest a couple of years back at the Roundabout in Incline Village. This is the Roundabout in Myers coming in on Highway 50. It's not the most welcoming of experiences. And so we're trying to improve the situation for our local communities so that we don't get to that point. So enter the Core Team of Destination Stewardship. There are 13 entities, actually 14 now, that are working hand-in-hand, land managers like the Forest Service and state parks, but also local jurisdictions. I must give credit to Washoe County for being the first local jurisdiction of the six local jurisdictions that comprise the basin to step up to support this partnership. We have the State of California, the State of Nevada, the Tahoe Fund, nonprofit, the Washoe Tribe, even in Truckee, the Visitors Authorities. We have four DMOs, direct marketing organizations in the region, and they are all connected for the first time at the table to talk to each other about working through these challenges. We're building on plans that are happening all over the West, all over the country. This term Destination Stewardship is something that you will see if you go to Jackson Hole, if you go to Vail, if you go to the Gulf Coast in Texas, if you go to many other locations. We are not alone. I was speaking with a local business owner in Tahoe yesterday who just did a huge circle with his kids going to college, visiting them in places like Montana, Bend, all over the Southwest. These are the challenges that all beautiful places are experiencing right now. And so everyone is working toward this goal of Destination Stewardship, having folks take an active role in taking care. So a few of our desired conditions for success, really trying to strengthen our communities and the economy and capitalize on the economic value of tourism while not denigrating the resource and compromising the quality of life. It's the standard triple bottom line, where the environment, the economy, and the community win. And trying to find that strategy strategically, you know, is a challenge right now. And we're still working through many, many of those challenges. We're doing things called pledges. Take the pledge to protect Lake Tahoe. Trying to encourage people to become stewards, to get involved in a trail building or a cleanup when they're involved. So the Take Care website has a list of all activities that could be accomplished when people might be coming up on vacation and they're looking for a way to give back. Something like travel philanthropy and travel tourism is something that we're working with our partners in the resorts. And so these are messages just from our local Tahoe areas, of course, the Incline, Crystal Bay. Visitors Bureau is actively engaged in this and has a leadership role in this core team. But we have so many partners that are working hand-in-glove to address these really, really difficult challenges. And I might add, there is really no destination in the entire world that has figured this out entirely. We're trying to take the best ideas from many different locations and apply it to our unique situation here in Tahoe. So this is the URL, the stewardshiptahoe.org. If you can go on that website and take a look at what we're trying to accomplish. The most recent milestone in this endeavor is that we've had some community workshops. Just a few weeks ago, we had nearly 200 people on the North Shore, South Shore, California, and Nevada to get together to say, here are my concerns, here are some ideas that we have for solutions. No surprise, but it's always nice to see the validation. The lake is number one. What came out loud and clear is the lake is the priority. Let's take care of the lake because as we say in Tahoe, Tahoe, the lake is the economy, and the economy is the lake. And so that is a quick scan of some instant feedback that we did in the workshops where people could vote on what their values were and how to prioritize Destination Stewardship for Lake Tahoe. So certainly, other areas like connecting people to quality of life, looking at cultural resources and our heritage, those were important as well. But really, the lake came out loud and clear. So top of mind, trash and traffic. These are the issues. And I know this agenda item is related to transportation as well. And that is where this intersection is between the experience that not only our visitors are having when they're stuck in traffic, but also our local communities when they cannot go to the store and they cannot leave their homes because the roads are clogged. So trap and track, trash and traffic are coming top of mind. Our local residents are feeling the pressures. Certainly fire also top of mind. And safety, really. I was on Highway 28 yesterday going around the East Shore, and we've had many accidents there. People have lost their lives, and it is another accident waiting to happen. So there are a number of transportation solutions that are emerging from this, and a renewed commitment of all the partners in Tahoe, from the federal, the two states, the local and private sectors, to address issues of transportation because it is coming to the top of the list. And some solutions are emerging related to transportation, better parking management. There is an issue of, you know, an experiment going on with the trail from Sand Harbor to Incline and the parking lot and surge pricing. Commissioner Hill on the Tahoe Transportation District has been working very hard. You heard about the Mobility Hub discussion. So these are things that need more work. They need more capital investment. They need more operations and maintenance investments. And we have a strategy to address that. But as I said, to really tap the economic prowess of tourism and to benefit our businesses, but also our local residents, which is what this Destination Stewardship Plan is all about. And I must say, the transportation space is one that we've been working on for a number of years at TRPA. We wear the hat of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. We got a special dispensation some years back, even though our population is small, to recognize some of our visitor population. And so that federal funds can flow to the basin, just as they do to Washoe County through RTC. And in that, in that convening possibility, we've been able to arrive at a strategy where we try to raise $20 million a year annually from all sectors, new money from the, from the federal government, from both states of California. New money from the federal government, from both states of California, Nevada, and from our local governments and private sector. And so I really want to thank this board and the county itself for participating in that, where we lock arms to say, we're all in this together for the benefit of the lake because we know at Tahoe, nothing is achieved without partnership, and we don't get anything done without collaboration. And this is going to be a challenge, and we'll take the work of all of us moving forward as we unveil the rest of this plan and go into implementation, which will be next year. I thank you for your time, members, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming out. Great, great presentation. I love, I, it's very, very clever. Very, very clever in the messaging. I just, I want to thank Vice Chair Hill for being proactive up there. It's, it's difficult. It's, the solutions are not easy to come by. Funding is not easy to come by. Transportation across Washoe County is an issue. So we recognize it everywhere, not just in the Lake Tahoe Basin, but everywhere. That's a problem for all of us. But that said, Commissioner, Vice Chair Hill, I have you signed in first, and you would really be the one to take the lead on this.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Julie. What a great presentation. I think this is a great intro to many more Tahoe conversations that this board will have. And Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing Julie to come and give just an overview of what we're doing up in Tahoe. In the year and a half since I was elected, we've been doing a lot of exciting things. And as the two states, many counties, and a city coming together, I have created a lot of partnerships in the basin that I'm very proud of. So I'm very excited to bring all of those initiatives to y'all in the coming months. But I also want to thank the commission for your commitment on making sure that we have harmony and balance between our residents in Tahoe and our tourists. So this commission funded this initiative, not alone, obviously. This was a partnership with many, so thank you for that. This commission also funded the Clean Tahoe Program, which is a group going around and cleaning up in North Shore. They started this month, actually, maybe they started in May. And they have been really transforming that space. And like Julie said, there are visitors who don't understand that pack-it-in, pack-it-out mentality, and we understand that, and we're committed to making it so we keep Tahoe clean. And as well as the microtransit program that this board has supported. We are working with the Incline Village Crystal Bay Visitors Center, as well as many other partners in North Shore. And that will be starting this, I think, in July. And so, and it will be running through the winter. And so that will be the first time we do microtransit in the wintertime. And I think we'll see a lot fewer cars on the roads and a lot more safety in North Shore, so thank you for that. And I'm just excited to continue the dialogue. Thank you so much for having TRPA come up and give us, or come down and give us a little brief overview on what they've been up to. And I also have to tip my hat to Commissioner Lucy, who's been so passionate about Tahoe his whole time being on this board and has been a great representative of the residents up there, as well as balancing the, making sure that we support that visitor tourism economy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Jung, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Ms. Reagan. I really appreciated this. I lived in South Shore many, many moons ago. And listen, that was back in 1994, '93, '94 season. And even back then, nobody liked tourists. So it's part of the ethos there, and you know, you avoid everything during the summer, you know, and you shop during the winter, only on the weekdays. I mean, and how much smaller were they then, and how much smaller was the visitors? So I get it, and it's a difficulty living in a tourist destination. And that's a year-round tourist destination. But we do need to definitely balance the less than 70,000 full-time. And I wonder if that's real full-time. I bet you that number's much less because people claim full-time to be in our tax shelter of the state of Nevada, the most rich. Incline Village has the highest income of any other place per capita in these United States. So there's lots of money to tap there with people that are getting great benefits from us by using us as a tax shelter. So we shouldn't forget that. In terms of, I love what you said of people newly embracing the outdoors. And I think that it's great the way you're looking at it. They just need to be taught how to live in the outdoors. If you've never been, it's like anything else. You try it for the first time, you don't know everything that you're supposed to do and what your responsibility is. But on another note, for universal greatness in a community is people, no matter whether they're visiting us or the people that already live there, that are outdoor nuts. That's why you live there. This is a step in the right direction for mental health for this community and for every visitor that comes here to enjoy what nature has to offer us and not be locked up in a room furthermore on your vacation, unless you want to be. I mean, my parents are big gamblers, so that's the best idea they've ever heard in their life. But for people that are newly doing this, I think it's so important that we teach them and that they can become experts on how to be a steward for not only Tahoe, but where they go back to. So I just see this as so many wins. I will always push this, and I hope that we will look into this and get a plan. We should turn Lake Tahoe into Mackinac Island. If anybody's been there in Michigan, that is a place you go. You can only reach it there by boat, and there are no vehicles at all on the island. And it is a whole different lifestyle and tourist experience. Now, I haven't been there either in probably 30 years, but it's, it is a whole different experience. And I believe Tahoe should start marching that way sooner rather than later. And I know we've talked about it forever, and it's a huge lift. But I want to let the vice chairwoman know too. I'm here to help you no matter what for the rest of my life because, to me, Tahoe still takes my breath away when I come over that mountain off Mount Rose Highway. When you come up and over and, and I even say that when I go because that's the feeling I have inside of me. I think it's a wonder of the world, and I'm so proud to live, have lived there and to live so close there. And with the vice chairwoman Hill's compassion and let's not, let's not understate this pitbull approach to how we were going to take care of Tahoe, is I'm so proud to see it, and I'm so happy that this board is taking such an active role in that, in that treasure that we all make money off of. I mean, the RSCBA should be giving you money for this. Everybody is making money off of that beautiful, beautiful gem, and we have to do all we can. And then one final idea I have for you. Have you thought of issuing to tourists wherever they're staying garbage bags that look cool and say, because this is what my family has always done. We go anywhere, we take a garbage bag or something, and on our way, walking in and walking out, we're picking up what the slobs left behind. Trust me, and a lot of four-letter words, but it gets done. And I think that's another way to change behavior. Like, yeah, that's, who's going to pick it up? You are. That's just the way it is because there's nobody else coming behind you. But I think you're fabulous, and I think what you're doing is groundbreaking for that in the 50 years of that lake. And I have to tell you too, and this is going to reveal too much about me, you look like Sutton Strackey from Real Housewives of Beverly Hills. And that is a big comment. So go ahead and look her up. But I seriously said, why is Sutton Strackey here? That's what I said when you first walked in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lucy, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Reagan, thank you for coming today. I do appreciate it. And I want to, I do want to point out one comment that Commissioner Jung made that I do feel is important. As the outgoing chairman of the RSCBA, I think that as part of the destination steward corps team, I think we should have a say in that. Be a part, or not a say in it, but be part of it, you know, in supporting the initiative of the destination stewardship plan. And the reason I say that is, is that as this board has put together a number of, some challenging debates to put together regulations for STRs, 99% of those STRs reside within Incline Village. And those individuals who retain licenses, who rent their STRs, pay a room tax, which goes to Reno Tahoe. And as Reno Tahoe, our logo states, we, most of our marketing is utilizing Lake Tahoe and the Tahoe Basin. So I'd just like to see if there's some ways that Reno Tahoe and RSCBA can do some better outreach and help you expand or broaden the horizon. I know Christina Ernie and Charles Harris and Mike LaRogetta over there at the RSCBA are probably more in tune with what they can do and what they are able to do. But because that we are collecting room tax and we utilize it, and Andy Chapman, who sits on the Crystal Bay Incline Village Convention Visitors Authority, he is the executive director of that, sits on the RSCBA board, I think it's important that those conversations are had, just so that we can, you know, help you with any financial needs to continue to do this lift because it is important to preserve that community and that area. Now, making it Mackinac Island, that's where I will have to disagree with my fellow commissioner. But I love the ability to go in and out of there and utilize that. And I want to, I want to do everything we can to preserve that for many years to come. So whatever we can help you with from the Reno Tahoe standpoint, I'd love to participate. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you so much. I'll just, I'll just finish up here by saying, you know, this is, we have a jewel of the world in our backyard. And you can do this literally. You can, you can talk to people throughout the world, and they know about Lake Tahoe. They may, they may not know about Reno, they may not know about, you know, even northern Nevada, but they know about Lake Tahoe. And it's one of those places where people want to come because it's, it's just an amazing place. So I want to thank you for all the, all the great work. I will say, you look exactly like Julie Reagan to me, but I'm just going to say that.
Oh, thank you.
That's who you remind me of.
Well, thank you, and thank you for all the compliments. Mr. Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity, and I do appreciate all the comments from the commissioners. And Commissioner Lucy, I will say Andy Chapman would, had wanted to be here today, but he is on vacation in Colorado. He's very involved in this initiative, and I would love more dialogue with the RSCBA. We'll definitely make a note and take all the comments under advisement. Thank you so much.
Well, as you can tell, we're committed.
Absolutely.
We are, we're committed. And we, and we feel that we have a distinct role to play in, in the way that this all happens. So we're on the team.
Appreciate it.
I mean, that's all I can tell you.
Team Tahoe. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number six.
Item six is donations, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Who'd like to, Commissioner Jung, would you like to read donations this morning?
I would love to. Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman. We have two donations today. Item six, Alpha One. We are taking a total market value of various items donated in the amount of $12,541 to our lovely Human Services Agency and directly to the Senior Services Fund for the senior centers of the amount of $207.55. And remember, this is for the last quarter, which ended May 31st. And we always, always, always respect anybody who pays there either through items or through cash, which we love cash the best, that help us support. You're paying above and beyond what you pay in taxes with an acknowledgement that you know we can't do it without your generosity. So we really appreciate that. And it also shows us how much this community values the Human Service Agency, which, by the way, every time we do a survey, it's the number one agency citizens want us to preserve. And especially how much people love seniors around here. We are a senior-positive, senior-accessible community, and we want to over-enhance that as we do with the Tahoe accessibility. Item six, Alpha Two, is a donation from Temple Sinai to Washoe County Human Services Fund in the amount of $175. And we thank you for this mitzvah, Temple Sinai. And again, can't do it without you in this community. And I hope each and every one of you listening and watching will dig down deep into your deep pockets and write checks to your favorite county processes here because we'll take it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Was that in the form of a motion?
That's in a form of a motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Vice Chair Hill. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No.
Okay, well, close public comment, bring it back to the board. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously for item six. Please affirm your votes. Thank you so much. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number seven, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, item seven is the consent agenda, 7A1 through 7J1. We are pulling 7I1 due to an update to that contract.
Okay. So pulling 7I1. Commissioners, any questions on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda with the 7I1 being polled.
Okay.
Second.
Seven, motion by Vice Chair Hill, second by Commissioner Lucy. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
There is public comment on 7G1.
Okay. Would you call public comment for us?
Yes. Elise Weatherly.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Weatherly, welcome.
Hi, Elise Weatherly. I just wanted to say, one of the things that I really appreciate about this board are the agenda items. I know that you remember I used to come in and just like, you know? But what I've noticed is that I have recommended to Highland Ranch Homeowners Association Board that they emulate what you guys do. For example, the appointment of Omar Raines to fill unexpired term. Well, my question is, how does a homeowners association handle that? I put in a board request to say, I would like to see the removal of two board members. How do I get it on the agenda? I would like to see an agenda item about the poop pickup that was replaced by the school. How do I do it? You guys don't do what the Highland Ranch Homeowners Association does, which is stand up and scream if somebody brings up an issue that they don't want to, you know, attend at that certain time. I actually said publicly, emulate Washoe County Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners. They don't stand up and scream when somebody is saying something that they don't like. They don't issue false allegations and false charges. I know, I'm off track. Okay. Anyway, all I will say is that we don't know why Chris Nenzel left. I would like to know. I don't know how you, how you bring about somebody to replace that person. I think documentation is the key, and I'm grateful for this guys, for you guys' way of handling things. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Any more?
That is all that's signed in.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Vice Chair Hill. We have a second by Commissioner Lucy. We have taken public comment. Is there any other discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none of those in favors, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Okay, that now takes us into our regular agenda. Now, before we go any further, commissioners, I'm asking to pull item number 20, 2-0. That's number 20. We just need some more information from, from my perspective. It will come back to us, I believe, on the 12th. And so with that, Vice Chair Hill, do you have a recommendation for a block vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would like to recommend that we block items eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16, 18, 19, 21, 23, and 24.
Okay. Commissioners, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Vice Chair Hill, second by Commissioner Lucy. Mr. Manager, would you read those?
Mr. Chairman?
Whoops. Yes, Commissioner Jung, I apologize.
I'm concerned about pulling the item for the Reno Housing Authority.
Okay.
I believe they've been giving us rent for eight months for $3.
Okay.
And I'm concerned what this will delay. I believe they are meeting today as well at the Reno Housing Authority and what this is going to put, where it's going to put us in terms of any place to act outside of this in our agreement with them. I know you have concerns with some oil tanks buried there, but I'm certain, I just saw her, now she's gone, our comptroller could figure out a way to insure or license or do something. And I'm not the subject matter expert here. I'd like to hear from the vice chairwoman, who is our subject matter expert and chair of the SEAB, hopefully doesn't exist anymore, to tell me what, why are we pulling this and what does this put at, does this put us at any risk of the Reno Housing Authority saying, now we want to go the market rate? I believe it was assessed, and they wanted to sell it to us under the assessment. I don't believe any of these things are going to go down in price if anybody's been living around here. And it makes me concerned how we're moving forward with our partners.
Okay. Vice Chair Hill.
I did not hear from Reno Housing Authority. I know that you did, Commissioner Jung, and I would like to understand if this is going to create some sort of issue with our relationship. I know that the chair had spoken to staff yesterday and I'm not sure if they had reflected any concerns with, with this decision. Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
When, when you spoke to staff, did they say there would be any problem with this agreement being delayed with Reno Housing Authority?
I, no, not with Reno Housing Authority. I spoke to, I spoke to our legal staff. The, the issue is just an agreement, some indemnification from the city of Reno, which we have not, from the seller of the property, which we have not gotten. And so we can certainly, you know what? If you want to leave it on, we'll, we can debate this. I'm happy to debate it. So you tell me what you'd like to do, Commissioners. Would you like to leave agenda item 20 on?
Let us agree into it.
Okay.
I will then, I will keep with my block because we will discuss item 20 and have staff come up.
Okay, so all good. All right, Mr. Manager.
Yes, so item eight is the Community Services Department recommends an agreement for services between Hogemeyer Design Group and Washoe County for the Nevada Cares Campus Improvements at a cost to the county of $238,084 as outlined in the staff report. Item nine is a community services recommendation to award a bid and approve an agreement for the 2022-2023 Slurry Seal for Selected Streets in Washoe County with Sierra Nevada Corp, Construction in an amount of $3,531,700 as outlined in the staff report. Item 10 is the comptroller recommends authorizing the excess liability insurance policy with Safety National Casualty Corporation and Safety Specialty Insurance Company at a cost of $370,490 as outlined in the staff report. Item 11 is a comptroller recommends reviewing the excess workers' compensation insurance policy and Safety National for a one-year term at a cost of $339,000 as outlined in the staff report. Item 15 is the Health District recommends to retroactively approve purchases from the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority in the amount of $200,760 in support of the COVID-19 response testing and vaccine efforts as outlined in the staff report. Item 13 is a Human Services Agency recommends approving Amendment Number Eight to the contract currently awarded to Reno Initiative for Shelter and Equality for the purpose of retention and recruitment in the amount not to exceed $2,757,313 as outlined in the staff report. Item 14 is a Human Services Agency recommends accepting a community mental health subaward in the amount of $277,954 from the State of Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health as outlined in the staff report. Item 16 is a Human Services Agency recommends the approval of sole service waiver between Washoe County and Well Care Services for the purposes of supported housing, supportive housing with an amount of $661,500 to be paid to Well Care Services as outlined in the staff report. Item 18 is the manager's office recommends the general fund contingency for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $600,000 for the purpose of various utilities, operations, maintenance, and fuel costs, along with emergency repairs at the Our Place Campus as outlined in the staff report. Item 19 is the manager's office recommends approving the contract with Allied Universal Security Services for armed and unarmed security at county facilities and events in the amount of $4,262,293 as outlined in the staff report. Item 21 is the manager's office recommends approval of the second amended lease agreement between Washoe County and the Housing Authority of the City of Reno for the county to continue occupying the property at 1775 East Fourth Street in connection to operations at the homeless shelter and related facilities as outlined in the staff report. Item 22 is a Technology Services recommends the approval of reimbursement of costs in the amount of $435,976.40 incurred by the City of Reno for expenses related to and in support of enhanced 911 Emergency Response System as outlined in the staff report. Item 24 is Technology Services recommends authorizing Plenium Builders, Inc. as the construction manager at Risk or C Mar and approve guaranteed maximum price agreement for construction of a public safety communication site at, at the amount of $920,063 as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Sorry, I was attending to something else. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on any one of the items in the block vote?
We do not.
Okay, I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Commissioners, any discussion on any of the items in the block? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, I believe unanimously. Okay, that takes us now, Mr. Manager, I believe, if I've done my math correctly, to item 15.
Yes, item 15 is a recommendation to approve amended allocations of the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds through the Coronavirus State Recovery Fund and Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the following projects. Number one, Well Care Living Supports and Services Pilot Project in a total amount of $1,255,200, an increase of $593,700 over the $661,500 allocated and approved by the Board on December 14, 2021. This project provides for supportive housing for persons and with developmental or intellectual disabilities or mental health conditions that impede their ability to live independently. Number two, Kids Cottage Emergency Beds Project in a total amount of $1,430,000, an increase of $243,000 over the $800,000 allocated and approved by the Board on December 14, 2021. This project funds care services for abused and neglected children in our community that have been removed from their homes. And recommendation to approve an allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds through the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the following project. Incline Village Access to Justice Project, $747,800. This project will fund renovations to the county-owned Inclineville Community Center to house the Incline Justice Court currently in leased space and will improve security and accessibility. And if approved, direction to the comptroller's office to make necessary net zero cross-fund and cross-functional budget appropriation transfers. Proposed projects fall within the American Rescue Plan Act and the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund eligible uses, include a proposed implementation process and come with extensive compliance and reporting requirements. Final allocations may vary from those proposed based on information developed during this item.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Commissioners, do you need any information from staff on this?
Nope.
Or a report? Okay, everybody good? Okay, I know we have public comment on this item. Madam Clerk?
We have Judge Tyrus.
Welcome.
Thank you.
It should be on.
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you very much. I'm actually just here to answer any questions that the commission might have with regard to the project relating to Incline Justice Court. If there are no questions, I'll, I'll happily sit down and thank you very much for your support.
Okay, I don't believe there are.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so it's been read into the record. Vice Chair Hill, I see you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am ready to make the motion. I move to approve the amended allocations for the American Rescue Plan Act funds through the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the projects listed in the staff report.
Okay.
Second.
So the motion by Vice Chair Hill, second by Commissioner Lucy, we have taken public comment. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screen. It does, all right. That takes us now to item 17. And so just, just so that everyone knows, once we get done with item 17, we're going to take a short break and just, just a very short one to accommodate some stuff and I'm going to leave it at that. All right, Mr. Manager, would you open item 17?
Item 17 is a recommendation to appoint, reappoint individuals to fill two positions as hunters, trappers, or anglers or engaged in ranching or farming in the county and an advisory board to manage wildlife with all the terms beginning June 30, 2022 and ending on June 30, 2025 as per NRS 501.260. Applicants for the hunters, trappers, or anglers or engaged in ranching or farming in the county include Ryan Brown, Charles Detling, William Morgan, Brad Pillsbury, Casey Pinkston, and Jim Rea, who is the incumbent, Steve Robinson, who is an incumbent. Application, applicants for the public seat include Leslie Mix and Irene Payne. Applicants not selected for the hunters, trappers, or anglers or engaged in ranching or farming in the county are eligible to be selected for the public seat.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
I, I need to make some corrections, corrections to the.
To the text in the.
The text in the agenda as it's been, as it's been posted. Jim Ray is currently listed under the sportsman incumbent. He is not serving in that capacity. He is currently serving as the public seat for this board. So he would be the incumbent under the public seat. The two sportsmen that are up for consideration would be Steve Robinson, who is the current incumbent, and then the open sportsman seat has been currently held by Arnold Pitts. This board has been a, one of the ones that continuously comes back for whatever reason. Finally, we have got this clarified with staff that these seats will no longer need to come back to this board for appointment unless one of the members does forego their seat because it was, was under the misunderstanding that these had term limits and that they had to be reappointed. They do not have term limits. So what will continue to happen is that these seats will hold until those seats are given up in the future. So this will constantly be that revolving issue. The other thing I want to bring forward is to clarify, you know, this, one of the, one of the issues that this has, this board does is that it works with the state Wildlife Commission, who we have Chairwoman East with us this morning, this morning here in the, who runs a state wildlife commission. And they set the seasons and limits and help work on, from a Washoe County standpoint, along with all the other counties, for fishing, hunting, trapping, and establishing those regulations that cover those, those seasons for hunting. As a, as an outdoorsman and as a hunter myself, I've been, I've been wildly involved in this board and I really do appreciate all of the individuals that have served and continue to serve on this board. It's important to provide aspects and perspective to our wildlife commission that, that pertain to Washoe Valley as we pertain, as we continue to try to work towards conservation and preservation of our wildlife, but also as of our community and our county as a whole. So I just needed, I wanted to put that on the record before we got into the discussion. I'd like to continue and make the recommendation that, that Jim Ray and Steve Robinson retain their seats on the, on the board as the public seat and the sport, one of the public seat and sportsman seat because they have served with that, that institutional knowledge and have that understanding and, and continue to want to serve, which is very sometimes difficult, but not, doesn't seem like today. But to find individuals to do that and then hope that we have a discussion about the open seat for whoever may want to participate. Thank you, Chairman.
So, Mr. Edwards, do we have any issue with the language in the agenda item with, with that error? Is that, is that going to hang us up in any way?
No, no, Mr. Chair, it's not. The correction that Commissioner Lucy was referring to is Jim Ray should have been listed under the, the public seat as the incumbent. He's listed under the sports, angler, sportsman anglers, that category seat as the incumbent. But later on in the agenda, it's clarified that applicants who aren't selected for the hunter, trapper, angler seat can be selected for the public seat. So then Mr. Ray can be selected to continue serving on the public seat. And then Mr. Robinson, if it's the board's wish, can be selected to continue serving on the hunters, trappers, anglers category. And then that leaves one other position, if I'm following the conversation correctly, for the hunters, anglers, trappers category. And you have your list of applicants there.
Okay, very good. Okay, so before we do anything, Commissioners, Vice Chair Hill, I have you signed in, but we've got a bunch of public comment and so I'd like to hear from the public before I make any kind of a decision. Vice Chair.
Okay.
Okay, okay, very good. All right. Madam Clerk, will you, Commissioners, do we, do we have any questions about anything else before we move into public comment on the agenda item? Okay, I just want to make sure that, that, that nobody has any questions. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment for me?
First up, we have Irene Payne.
Okay.
I've already made my public comment. I don't want to take your time and say exactly what I said earlier. So thank you for that.
Okay, Ms. Payne is declining to speak again. All right.
Rex Flowers.
Good morning, Commissioners. I would like to talk to you about your incumbents. I would like you to please go forward on Steve Robinson. He spent six years there. He's done a good job. He's involved, he's committed to making commission meetings, and he's involved in a committee on mule deer enhancement and resource. So he's, he is definitely an asset. I would like to also ask you to consider Ryan Brown. He's served on NNSCI. He volunteers quite a bit with MBU for conservation work. He's definitely engaged and he has made a commitment. He's here today and will speak on his own behalf, but he's made that commitment. As far as the public rep, I know Jim Ray well. I've been going to meetings for 30 years, so it's not like I haven't met him and talked with him. And he's a very good individual. But I'd like to see us move forward with a new person. I, I would like you to consider Brad Pillsbury. Brad Pillsbury is involved in a lot of conservation efforts out there. You know, through NNSCI, we have Mason TRTs that works with our kids, gets them into the outdoors. He too, he volunteers on conservation projects. These are things we need. We need people who are fully engaged beyond going to seven meetings a year. It's this, we've gone through a little bit of a drought within the Washoe cab and we need to get that built back. Our resource cannot wait longer for the right person to come along. We have a good chairman right now, a very strong leader. We have a very good vice chair and I think these three individuals would complement everything we're trying to do at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Matt Malarkey.
Good morning, Commissioner, and thank you for the record.
Good morning, Commissioner, and thank you for the record. Matt Malarkey, Chairman of the Wausau County Advisory Board to Manage Wildlife. But I'm submitting comment today just for myself. I too would like to see the reappointment of Jim Ray and Steve Robinson. I think that they're active cab members and good additions. From the public perspective, really, the only information that was available to us was the applications that were online. For your record, none of the links to their resumes or their letters of recommendation were active. And so we couldn't see any of that. But anyways, looking at their applications, you know, what I looked for was that they were complete, that they were thorough, and that they were detailed. And of the applicants listed here outside of the incumbents, you only had three that submitted an application, a resume, and letters of recommendation. In this deal, letters of recommendation are the hardest things to get. They take effort. They have to go out and find people that will vouch for you. And that's an important thing to consider. So again, out of all these, you had Ryan Brown, Brad Pillsbury, and Casey Pinkston that met all of these criteria. So just judging on that, as a member of the public, I would like you guys to support Ryan Brown for last remaining seat. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Elise Weatherly.
Welcome, Elise Weatherly.
Hi, Elise Weatherly. What he just had to say was very relevant. What I want to say is thank you to all the people that want to help in this community. I didn't realize before how many open positions there were and how much opportunity for involvement and everything. The one thing I would do in the future is probably try to be on this board. I was, I lived on a farm, dairy farm, ranch, mining kiln, you know, all these different places where you've got all this experience. Maybe it would be good for somebody like me who's not really politically oriented to get in and say, well, here's what I learned, you know, what do you think? Back in the days when I had to select applicants to work, you know, for my department, it was hard. I don't, I don't envy you guys having to go through and make the right decisions as a group, because how do you know if you're making the right decision or not? Anyway, I wanted to say how much I have appreciated you over the years. And thanks, you guys. Good, good luck or whatever. Okay.
Thank you, Madam.
Brad Pillsbury.
Welcome. Thank you. I'd like to also, Brad Pillsbury, for the record, like to say Steve Robinson as an incumbent would be great for the, the cab. The other remaining positions being an open seat. I'd like to put my name in the hat. I'm a native Nevadaan. I support wildlife. I volunteer and boots on the ground. Not being able to read resumes and other letters of recommendation makes it kind of hard to figure out if you saw those letters of recommendation or know who we are and who actually applied for that. So I'd like you to consider putting those back out on the, for everybody to read or to allow the public to see those letters of recommendation. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Ryan Brown.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. For the record, my name's Ryan Brown. I'm applying for the advisory board to manage wildlife, as you guys know. As I stated in my application, I'm very involved in the Wausau Cab and the Nevada Commission for Wildlife right now. I'm up to speed on all the issues, totally understanding the, the trials and the, sorry, I'm not very good at this, obviously. If I pass out, somebody can pick me up. But, but there's a lot of problems and issues going on specifically in Northern Wausau I'm very up to speed on. And I look forward to representing Wausau County at this appointment and would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Casey Pinkston.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I'm Casey Pinkston. I'm also an applicant for the Board to Manage Wildlife. Just wanted to come introduce myself. Yeah, I've lived in Reno and Wausau County my whole life and enjoy the outdoors and everything it has to offer. Just if, wanted to be here if anyone had any questions or anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Ken Giato.
So I may have misunderstood Commissioner Lucy, but I think he said that there wasn't a term limit on, on this. And the, it does indicate 501.260, which would be incorrect as far as term, the term limits. It is 501.275, and it reads, "The Board of County Commissioners shall appoint members to the boards of their respective counties. Each member appointed shall serve a term of four years." Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Lucy, I have you signed in.
Chairman, to respond to the public comment, there are term years, years for term, but now limits to how many terms can be held in the seat. So just as the same as our cab members for our citizen advisory boards, and this community advisory board for wildlife will all fall under the same, they have terms, just not term limits to those terms. Once again, you know, I want to thank, first of all, the applicants that have participated here this morning. I think this is phenomenal to see this kind of outreach and discussion in regards to these boards. We cannot do this, the work that we do, without individuals that are, one, involved, but two, connected with the community. This, this board does not just, not only does it just discuss hunting and challenges within the hunting realm and work with Endow, but it does, you know, I want to bring up the, the ranching discussion. A ranching discussion is, you know, as it pertains to livestock in Northern Wausau and a number of our, our ranching communities and families within our area. Livestock is a big issue that when we have predators and predator control and a number of different things, this is what this board will work with Endow to preserve and work on those, those issues as well. So I want to make sure that, that, that comment from public comment is acknowledged as well because the ranching is a major issue to this. I would like to still support Jim Ray and Steve Robinson as their incumbents. I want to make sure, I think, that institutional knowledge, you've heard that they have that ability. And we can move Mr. Ray to the sportsman's seat, and, and anybody, and any of the other applicants could be placed under the public seat. And that is at the ability of this board to do that. So with that, I will step back and allow the conversation. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm going to wait for Mr. Edwards to come back to make my comments. Vice Chair Hill, I have you signed in next.
Well, I'm so glad that Commissioner Lucy told me that we could move Jim Ray to the sportsman seat because I think that Irene Payne would be a really great addition to this board. So that would be my suggestion. I agree with you, Commissioner Lucy, that there are fabulous applicants, and I'm so excited to see the interest on this board. So I want to see how we can keep people involved, but I'm very excited to support Irene Payne.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Edwards, Commissioner John, I'm sorry, I have you signed in. Go ahead. I'll, I'll wait to ask Mr. Edwards the question.
I, I happen to agree with the vice chairwoman. I'd like to see Ms. Irene Payne on this as the public portion, largely because this whole board is men. And I know that women are outdoors women because, hi, here's one right here. So I really would like to see that. And I think it's so important for the hunters amongst us. I grew up in a hunting family. I do not hunt myself, but I'm not against hunting either. It's just not my style. But I will tell you why this is so important to have Ms. Payne as the public person there as well, because I think there's a big misconception amongst people who harvest animals out on our public spaces. You are the most eco groovy people I've ever met in my life, because you want to preserve your ability to do what my brother calls going to church. For him, that is what he, every vacation, every time off, this is spent traipsing around Nevada, Idaho, and wherever the hell else he can get a, a hunting license. And this is where the meeting of the minds and the advocacy for our greater outdoors occurs. You put somebody else in there from the public who has shown us ability through the regional animal services to be a good public servant and steward to the laws, policies, and regulations, but most importantly, to build those bridges where I believe you don't realize how much you have in common with your environmental progressiveness and advocacy. And I know you don't like me outing you right up here with this, but that is the truth of all the people that love to harvest animals in our public space. If we didn't have good regulations and people providing oversight on this, your hobby is gone, and you're well aware of that. But I just love, I love outing you a little bit because I appreciate you so much with your, your naturalist approach and bend and ability to look at the big picture, which is sometimes very difficult when we get down into our subject matter expertise. So I too am in support of Ms. Payne for the public seat. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next, and then I'll go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I tend to agree with Mr. Lucy, Commissioner Lucy, on his thoughts about somebody from the ranching. And so I would suggest Ryan Brown for that.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Edwards, do we have an issue with the fact that the links were broken online?
So the statutes provide that if the public body's website, if there's a glitch in the website for posting supporting material, that that's not a violation of the open meeting law.
Okay.
I did go back and check the binder, just since that was brought up, to see if there were copies of those materials in the binder back there. I didn't have a ton of time to go through it, but it didn't appear to me that they were. And so that is, is a different issue because you're supposed to have one copy at the meeting. So what I'm suggesting at this point is that you either pause this for ten minutes or whatever to let staff print that stuff up and, and put some copies at the back of the room. Pull it. I don't know that you need to pull it, but I do think that, that there should at least be some copies at the, at the back of the room, since it's not on the website and it's also not in the binder. So.
Okay. I tell you what we're going to do. We have need to take a recess anyways. So Vice Chair Hill, this will work out well. And so we're going to go into recess. Actually, let, let's go into recess, Commissioners. How long do you, do you need?
Till noon.
Fifteen, you need fifteen minutes?
Let's do lunch.
Want to do a lunch? Want to come back at, want to come back at?
One. This is a food desert. Other people would like to eat lunch too.
We'll be back, we'll be back at one o'clock. Okay. I'm going to call us back to order. It is one o'clock. And we are still on item number seventeen.
Chairman.
So, Mr. Lucy.
In light of the discussion earlier today with the applications and having the amount of applicants that wanted to participate in the inability to read all the applications, and I would suggest, in this board, the next scheduled meeting for this board is not until August fifteenth. And so a July appointment would give ample time for us to repost in July, have the ability for all of the applicants to read and participate in the discussion. I would ask that we delay this until the next regular board meeting of the county commission in July.
Okay. Mr. Edwards, talk to me for a moment about, this is not a true tabling of the item, but it is just a, it's a continuance. Can, do we need to vote on a continuance? Or what, what's the procedure for us to do it properly?
It's a discretionary thing. I think it's probably smart to do a motion to continue and just have a set date. And that way, it's nice and official.
I'm good.
Okay. So Chairman, if I may, I'm going to pull up my calendar really quick here. But I would make a motion to continue this item until the next regular meeting of the county commission in the month of July.
Which is the twelfth.
Which is the twelfth. Okay.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion, and I have a second. We have taken public comment on this item already. So this is a motion for a continuance. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Okay. So that item, item number seventeen, has been continued until our first meeting in July. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number twenty.
Item twenty is a recommendation to approve a purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of 4.747 acre property located at seventeen seventy-five East Fourth Street, Reno, Nevada, eight nine five one two, APN zero zero eight dash twenty-two eleven dash fifty, in the amount not to exceed $5,150,000, and closing costs not to exceed $12,000, and authorize the chair to execute agreement and documents in support thereof. The property will be used to provide shelter and related services for people experiencing homelessness.
Okay. I had asked for also a continuance on this item because I think that there's a bunch of information out there that, that we still need to be aware of. Mr. Edwards, would you give us a little bit of background as to what has come in?
Sure. There's an ongoing discussion about the, what to do with the potential cleanup on the property because of underground fuel storage tanks that have been identified to be present there. I think there are six of them. So that's issue number one. And issue two is that yesterday evening at around 5:30, Reno Housing Authority's staff sent over to county staff a list of changes from. sent over to county staff a list of changes from RHA, I'm just gonna say RHA, so I don't have to keep saying Reno Housing Authority. RHA's counsel had done a review of the purchase and sale agreement and made recommended additions and changes and moving things around and things of that nature. That came over to us this morning, at about 5:30 a.m. this morning, and I was conferring with the chief deputy that oversees the civil team about whether or not there was enough time to do a review on those. The short answer is no. We did a cursory review to kind of say, well, bare bones, like these are things that we recommend changing. One of the provisions, for example, that they recommended to add to the agreement was that the county could do, if it wanted, a Level 2 environmental assessment on the property, but that the county is responsible for the cleanup cost for whatever contamination is revealed by that assessment. There, in the course of discussions between RHA, the city, and the county, as this has moved along, there has been quite a bit of discussion, I'll characterize it as informal, where the city has, city people and RHA people have indicated that there may be some appetite on their end to help with any contamination cleanup costs. Now the provision is essentially saying, county, you buy it, you own it, it's your cleanup, it's your cleanup costs. That issue, I think you would be free to do whatever you wanted to do on that today. If you wanted to say, you know what, acceptable risk, we'll do it. There are people within your system that have some knowledge about cleanup issues and those types of things. We're concerned because of the strict liability that goes along with some of the environmental laws. You know, if you have a property that's got certain environmental contamination on it, you're stuck with the cleanup, and it doesn't matter if you caused it, or didn't cause it, or had no idea, et cetera. You get the idea of what that, so that's the concern from the legal side. The bigger concern, though, is with the changes that came over to us this morning.
How many were there?
278 changes, recommended changes to the purchase and sale agreement. So we were running a little tight on between 5:30 a.m. and 10 a.m. this morning on trying to review 278 changes to the agreement. We can do it. We do need more time, I think, for that purpose. So I, it makes sense to me from a legal recommendation standpoint to continue this item. I know that's not the only factor, and I know there are other considerations involved. There's, you know, there's a vision about acquiring this property and incorporating it into the CARES campus, you know, set of services. I fully get that. And those are complicated decisions that you get to make as the board. From a legal standpoint, I think it makes sense if it's continued.
And what I would also say is that I would like the board to be able to look at those changes and what those conditions are as part of our packet. That's the first thing. And then the second thing, and I would remind us of, is we did approve earlier in a vote, item 21, which was to continue the lease, so we're not out on the street. So there is, there is some wiggle room there. I know that there's a great deal of desire to move forward with this, but I'm, I just, I'm a little fearful. I want to look before we leave. And so with the boards' indulgence, I will ask again if we can continue this item. And, Mr. Edwards, talk to me. Do you think we can have, do you think we can, we can make a decision by the July 12th meeting? And, you know, enough, enough to give you guys the opportunity? Or should we, I mean, tell me what you'd like to do, Commissioners. We can schedule it for the July 12th meeting, and then if there's still not enough information, and if there's still some discomfort, then we can, we can decide whether we want to put it on that agenda.
That's totally adequate, you know, what you just said, putting it on July 12th. I think that we can be done with our review from that, from our standpoint at that time. If for some reason it needs to be a longer period, we'll certainly flag it at that point. But I think that's appropriate. I do want to put, too, on the record, back to the comments I was making earlier about the other factors at play. You know, Commissioner Jung brought this up earlier, and this is not an invalid consideration. I mean, RHA or the, and/or the city, they're kind of working in tandem on this. You know, they might decide, you know what, we're gonna sell it to, you know, Act Me Widget Co., because you guys, you know, didn't move on it, and so snooze, you lose. That's a risk. But I, from our standpoint, again, the wisdom of taking on that many changes and the environmental stuff, while that's all in the air, is not, does not, is not outweighed by that risk. So that's all.
Okay. Mr. Lucy?
No, my iPad is dying.
I apologize. I thought you wanted to make a comment.
No, my iPad is dying.
What's the appetite of the board? Would you like to continue it, or do we want to move forward?
Mr. Chairman, I think it wise that we continue it until July 12th, and we continue our relationship and ongoing conversations with RHA. Hopefully, they're not going to turn around and sell this from under us, you know, but it does sound like there is appetite of the board to continue to work with them, so I hope they understand that. But we obviously need to work through the changes that they submitted to us and any environmental concerns of the parcel that we're about to purchase.
And, yeah, and I completely agree. I want to continue the relationship. I don't want, I'm not trying to throw the relationship off into the ditch and say, no, it's, you know, we're not coming back to the table for any type of negotiation. That's not it at all. I just want to make sure that legally we have all of our eyes dotted, our t's crossed, t's crossed, and all the punctuation is correct.
Yes.
Okay. Would you like a motion again, Mr. Edwards, for continuance?
Yeah, again, I think that makes it clearer in the record.
Okay. Looking, hold on just a second, Mr. Lucy. Just give me one second. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on item number 20?
There is nobody signed in.
Okay. Okay, very good. All right. So I'm looking for a motion.
Chairman, at this time, I would make a motion to continue item 20 until the next regular meeting of the July County Commission, Board of County Commissioners for July 12th.
Okay.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. We have asked for public comment. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Oh. Jean also has a screen issue.
Are you an aye?
I'm no.
Okay. Ryan is, Ryan is coming to, for whatever reason, our granica screens are, and I don't have a motion here either, it looks like.
I keyed it in.
You keyed it in. Okay. Very good. Do I, do I need to restart?
Go back to the old school ways.
It's okay. Okay. Very good. All right. We will close item number 20. That takes us now, Commissioners, to item number 22.
Item 22 is a request by the Director of Washoe County Regional Animal Services through the Washoe County Clerk, and pursuant to Washoe County Code 2.030, to initiate amendments to Washoe County Chapter Animals in Foul, primarily to update provisions relating to the dangerous, to dangerous and vicious dogs. The amendments are being requested to repeal a section duplicative of state law related to harboring, harboring a vicious dog at a section making unlawful to fail, making it unlawful to fail to quarantine or surrender for quarantine. Biting animals or animals that have been in close contact with an animal suspected are known to have rabies, adding a section governing euthanasia of vicious dogs. Add or amend definitions of dangerous dog, vicious dog, and animal, substantial bodily harm, and provocation. And amend provisions relating to the dangerous and vicious dog determination process, exemptions under which a dog may, may not be found dangerous or vicious, the requirements for dangerous and vicious dog registration, the requirements for relocating and transferring ownership of a dangerous or vicious dog, unlawful acts by the owner or keeper of a dangerous or vicious dog, impoundment of a dog both before and after a dangerous or vicious dog determination, and to update a section governing the criminal and civil penalties of violation of Chapter 55, and direct the county clerk to submit the request to the district attorney for preparation of a proposed ordinance in accordance with WCC 2.040 for Regional Animal Services. We have our Director Cheyenne here today.
Ms. Schul, welcome. Nice to see you again. Give us, give us a little bit of background on this item.
Good afternoon. Cheyenne Schul for the record. Today, I'm here to request amendments to Chapter 55 as it relates to dangerous and vicious dogs. And the last time that we opened this particular ordinance to revise it was in 2015. So Animal Services has had approximately six years to operate by the current language, and we have identified some areas of, areas that need to be refined, areas that need to be cleaned up. And working through our Washoe County Regional Animal Services Advisory Board and members of the public and staff, we have come up with some proposals for amended language. And so my intention today is to go over, an overview of the substantive changes, and if there's any feedback or questions, I'm happy to entertain those at this time, or anytime during my presentation. So as mentioned, the overview of the major changes is we would like to amend the definition of dangerous dog to add a second category. So currently, we have one category for dangerous dog declarations. We would like to add a secondary category of vicious. So currently, an animal can be declared dangerous under our current code if it has a noted menacing behavior twice within 18 months, if it killed or substantially inflicted substantial bodily harm to a human, if it killed or injured a domestic animal, and law enforcement can also declare an animal dangerous if it is used in the commission of a crime. So what we would like to do is add that second tier of vicious to include if a dog kills or inflicts substantial bodily injury upon a human on public or private property without provocation, that dog can be declared vicious. If it killed an animal well of property without provocation, it can be declared vicious. If, if the dog has previously been declared dangerous, continues to exhibit dangerous behavior, it can then be declared vicious. Adding that secondary tier will help delineate the egregiousness of violations by dogs, instead of looping all of them in under one particular dangerous declaration.
Ms. Schul, would you do me a favor at this time?
Certainly.
Would you define without provocation? In other words, in other words, let's just assume that I'm breaking into your house, and your dog bites me, maybe multiple times. Good for the dog. Thank you, Commissioner Jung.
So that would be considered a provoked bite.
That would be considered a provoked?
You're on the animal's property in the, in the resident's home, so that would be considered provoked. An unprovoked bite would be something like you're walking through a parking lot at Walmart, and a dog jumps through an open window of a vehicle and attacks you, and it has happened. That would be unprovoked.
Okay. I just, Commissioners, I just wanted to make sure that we had, had that on the record, what it meant to be without provocation. So I apologize. Thank you.
No worries.
Continue.
We'd like to add a couple of definitions into the code, defining animal to include dogs, cats, or mammals that are kept for personal enjoyment, because currently, the code includes everything from birds to rabbits to rodents. And we want to remove rodents, fish, and birds from animals that would be considered, if a dog attacked it, it would be considered dangerous or vicious. We would like to remove those and just keep it to dogs, cats, or livestock. We would like to insert bodily, substantial bodily harm. So basically, the definition that's ascribed to it in NRS 0.060, so that we have some definition to benchmark against. And we would also like to put in provocation and a definition for that, which means occurs when a person is physically abusing, tormenting, teasing, assaulting, or attacking the subject animal. The next area that we would like to add a little bit more guidelines are for the requirements for a dog that's been declared dangerous or vicious. And currently, dangerous dogs are required, owners are required to have $250,000 liability policy insurance. What we would like to do is decrease that amount to $150,000 for dangerous, and leave the $250,000 liability insurance for vicious animals. We would like to issue, department issued signage that is required to be posted on the property. Currently, we don't have any requirements other than the letter size of the signs that people can literally make up their own out of bubble paint, and we have someone who did that. So we would like to create our own professional signage that is recognized universally, universally by law enforcement, first responders, et cetera, that a dangerous or vicious animal lives at that property. We would like to expand the enclosure requirements. Currently, within code, a person that has a declared dangerous dog can only keep their animal inside of an enclosure that's built on their property. We would like to add the dwelling as, in the enclosure, as I would say 90% of our dangerous dogs are kept inside the property anyway. They're not kept on an exterior yard enclosure. HOA requirements, and some people don't have yards, so it really is prohibitive for people to be able to keep their dog if they don't have the area to build that enclosure. So we'd like to add the dwelling as part of the enclosure that would be inspected by Animal Services and approved. We would like to keep the enclosure as part of a requirement if they chose to. So if an animal goes outside, is unattended, they have to have an enclosure outside. They cannot release it in the yard and go to the store. It has to be within that enclosure. So the enclosure requirements that we currently have in place, we propose to keep, for the exception of the size. So within our current, current code, it includes size based on the size of the animal. It has proven in the last six years to be very prohibitive to dog owners to try to have higher out, to have enclosures built to meet these requirements to those sizes. And so we're proposing a standard 10 by 5 for one dog, regardless of the size, and then for each additional dog that gets added, it's five feet of enclosure space. It will still have to have the roof, it'll still have to be nine gauge, it'll still have to have the concrete footers, but we just want to make it easier for people to go to a home improvement store or a feed store and buy the kits that are readily available versus trying to have something built, which has, again, proven to be challenging to dog We would like to improve the movement oversight of animals within the county, so if an animal's been declared dangerous or vicious, currently, it only requires them to notify Animal Services within 30 days. We would like them to actually give us a description of the animal, give us a copy of the dangerous or vicious order, and also a new address of where they're moving to. And Animal Services will be required to inspect that new property within Washoe County to ensure that it meets the minimum standards to keep that dangerous or vicious animal Dangerous or vicious animals that are entering or leaving Washoe County, this has been a challenging one, because a lot of animals that move into Washoe County may already have a dangerous or vicious order on them from another county. And our ordinances and laws don't necessarily, they're not apples to apples. And so what we've decided to do is require them to still give us the 30-day notice that they're moving into our county, but also name and description of the dog, a copy of the order from whatever jurisdiction they're moving from, their proposed new address, and then if they're moving out of the county, verification of the change of address. So we have a lot of people who, their animal gets declared, and they say, well, we're moving out of Washoe County. We have no bearing, we have no teeth right now to track where they go or what happens, and oftentimes, those animals end up right back in Washoe County after a few weeks or months. So we would like to have some verification by microchip and information changed in the new jurisdiction and the new address, license update change, change of mailing address, something to give us some reassurance that they have actually left Washoe County. The next section that I'd like to highlight that we'd like to clarify are when Animal Services may or shall impound animals that have been declared dangerous or vicious or are pending their dangerous or vicious hearing. Animal Services currently has jurisdiction to impound an animal for public safety if they are pending a hearing, and if that animal has been off-leash and bitten someone or attacked someone, and we're not able to verify that their property is able to keep that animal safely contained, we can currently impound them. But we'd like to clarify that pending a hearing, animal has not been declared yet, Animal Services may impound for injury to another animal. Animal Services shall impound for injury to a human. That would be considered a public safety issue and risk. Boarding fees will be waived to the dog owner if the dog is not declared dangerous or vicious. If a dog is already declared dangerous or vicious, and they are violating the, the order, the requirements to comply with the Dangerous Dog Code requirements for enclosure, or getting, having the animal muzzled and under control when they're out in the public, Animal Services can impound those animals at that time as well. And also, a person's animal that has been declared dangerous or vicious has 30 days to comply. So in that interim period, if their dog is at home in a temporary enclosure, the Animal Services is approved. If that animal gets out of that temporary enclosure, Animal Services will be coming to impound it for public safety. The next section is a previously omitted section that gave Animal Services the ability to request that an animal that was declared dangerous or vicious to be euthanized. Granted, these will be very rare occasions, and there is due process built into this request. And the only time that this process would unfold is if the animal inflicted serious injury killed a person, or inflicted substantial bodily harm, and Animal Services has to request the animal be euthanized to the Administrative Hearing Office. It is up to the Administrative Hearing Office to decide whether or not they order the animal to be euthanized. animal to be euthanized.
Excuse me, Commissioner. So is that, I was going to ask you to define due process. Would it go through the court system or, or what, what? Give me that definition.
So there's two different processes for the euthanasia clause. So the first one would be if the animal is not already declared vicious, and the animal has, let's say, killed a person. And Animal Services goes through the process of making the request to the Administrative Hearing Office to hear this request to declare this animal vicious. The request will go in at that time to have the animal euthanized. The owner will receive 10 days' notification that this request is coming before the Administrative Hearing Office, just as they already do, to appear before the Administrative Hearing Office, and it's their opportunity to be heard. And then it's their opportunity to object to that decision. And then they can, they can also appeal that decision from the Administrative Hearing Office.
Who would the appeal go to?
I believe it goes to the Second Judicial Court.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And then if an animal that has previously been determined vicious goes on to attack additionally more humans and/or more animals without provocation and through reckless and negligent care by the owner, Animal Services can request a court order for the animal to be euthanized. So there's two different mechanisms there to request the euthanasia of an animal. So that animal has already gone through the AHO process, has already been declared vicious, and now it's going on to continue to exhibit this behavior. So it is a public safety risk, and Animal Services can go through the court system to request that euthanasia. There are a lot more ancillary changes that are in that table that are attached to my staff report that I don't intend to cover today unless anyone has any additional questions. Those are the, sort of the meat and potatoes of the changes that we are planning on working on and going through the code and cleaning up. And I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Okay. One last question, if I may, before I open this up to commissioners. How, do we essentially mirror NRS, or are we tighter than NRS or looser than NRS?
So currently, we are essentially, in a way, we are tighter because we have the dangerous declaration only. So everything gets looped into that pot. NRS currently has the two different delineations. So you've got dangerous and vicious. So you're, you're really creating a system where if an animal gets out and attacks the neighbor's chicken and kills the chicken, though that's a tragedy for that chicken owner, it's not as serious as a dog getting out and killing the neighbor's child. And so those two need to be separated out and have, you know, different penalties for the two different egregiousness.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Shul? Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
First up, we have Cindy Martinez.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you again for the record, Cindy Martinez.
Welcome.
And I was very interested in this item. What some of you may not know is I started my career in law enforcement as a dog catcher with Sparks Police Department in 1995, when the jurisdictions each had their own AC units. In 1995, I investigated at least three vicious animal attacks, one of which, up here in this article at the top, Angela Seaberry, four years, four years old, was attacked by an Akita in the neighbor's yard, and she was hospitalized. The dog grabbed her by the head and neck, and she was very, very badly injured. Fortunately, that family did euthanize the dog who was named Shredder, who had a prior dog history in 1994 and 1995, and had been permitted to run free. Additionally, I had investigated a pit bull attack where Carol Johnson was bitten in the face by a pit bull over at Joe Paw Trailer Park over at Sullivan in Prater. That dog owner spirited the dog out of the county into Quincy, so we had no recourse. So at that time in 1995, the Sparks Municipal Codes, the Washoe County Codes were insufficient to, to respond to this kind of attack. In addition to that was, over on M Street, there was a black lab that was playing with a family's children. There was five kids that were playing, and the dog bit all five children that were playing. So there were five dog reports, bite reports. And the owner, I impounded the dog as a vicious animal. We went through the due process, and the man was mad at me because I didn't understand that the dog was only playing with the kids, and if he'd had hands, he would have grabbed him instead of biting him. So these kinds of things are put into place because we have irresponsible owners. So I absolutely support the language here. And so when the county becomes aware that there is a threat to public safety, and whether it appears to be a violation of, of property rights, which I would disagree, is that you have to weigh the public safety risk against the due, due care that the county has to exercise, as well as the responsibility of the animal owner. And the only reason, as we find in law enforcement, code enforcement, animal, any kind of enforcement action, is because there's irresponsible citizens that don't, don't take care of the business at hand, which invites enforcement oversight. So I absolutely enforce or support strengthening these codes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kenji Otto.
So part of my background is that I used to be a California State Humane Officer, which gave me a, a lot of different various authorities, as well as I worked within the county of Monterey as a humane officer, and also through the Monterey County SPCA. And we contracted with various cities, so I was also a animal control officer for a variety of the towns and cities in the area, in the county. Now, I, I don't have any objection to the, the effort to make this better, but I do, I have to reject it and ask you to reject it as a whole. The, I think it's, it goes a little bit overboard when you're talking about going on or where it says killed or inflicted substantial body harm upon human on or off owner's property. I have gotten, been told by a number of individuals that have been, had their dogs declared vicious and have, had gone through this whole process, they're heartbroken because their dogs are taken away and, and for the ones I've talked to, and the animal control, in many cases, don't allow them to see them, see their animals while they're being incarcerated. And, and they have all of these rules, it sounds like. And I don't see why the animal can't be kept at home, inside, and under control, and checked on it now and again by the animal control officers. The other thing is, as far as the animals being moved out of the county, you chip them, you have, require them to be chipped, and that's pretty much, I mean, to go beyond that is just an overreach of government, in my opinion. If I had, I've asked, when I was doing this, I asked people to, you know, if they can move, I had a case where one dog was the head, head pack animal, and they killed about 20 or 30 of these dogs, had gotten together of all kinds, killed about 20 sheep, 4/8 sheep. And I located the pack, the pack dog, and then had them remove it from the county. That resolved the entire issue, because I wasn't about to go after any. If I went after the entire pack, there would have been about a whole bunch of people really upset with me. So again, I, I ask that you reject this as a whole and have them bring it back and rewrite, fix some of the areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Ms. Rodyan, I can do this. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Okay. I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to bring it back to the board. Commissioner Lucy, I have you sign it first.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Shul, I have a question for you, ma'am. Ms. Shul, under our current codes, I believe, my understanding through my veterinary businesses, that any animal that does bite another hu, bites a human, a dog, cat, whatnot, currently, at least from my understanding, under canines, that those dogs, if pointed out to Animal Services, are supposed to be quarantined under our rabies protocol. Is that correct?
That's correct, if they're, if they bite another person.
If they bite any human, so if they bite a human at any point, that they have to be quarantined with a registered licensed veterinarian or with the Animal Services, correct?
So there are multiple ways that an animal can be quarantined. Most veterinary offices do not provide that service. They're just too strictly providing, you know, surgical procedures and preventative care, and boarding is not an option. So Animal Services provides quarantine services at our facility, and animals can also be home quarantined if they're current on the rabies vaccination, and so long as the animal was not off-leash at the time of the bite.
Okay. And until, and then, so this would just allow, you know, an extension of what we already currently have drafted underneath our rabies protocols to allow for a little bit more, let's just call it due diligence into the case, so to speak, is allowing the Animal Services to investigate and also court system for due process, correct?
That's correct. It's basically to create a clean, cleanup language to give the authority to Animal Services to take those animals, and it's a misdemeanor violation if the owner fails to present the animal for that quarantine.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Shul. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for staff? I know some of the things that were brought up were covered in the presentation at the very, very beginning, so I, I know that it was covered of one of the speakers. If there are no other questions, I am willing to entertain a motion either for or against or give direction to staff.
Chairman.
Mr. Lucy.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I see no reason why not to move forward with this, these clarifying updates to this code. This commission worked very diligently on the entire rewrite of Chapter 55, five-plus years ago, and six-plus years ago. And a lot of work went into this, and we gave it ample time. And Ms. Shul and her staff, I believe, have done quite a bit of public outreach and worked with their advisory board and discussions. I feel this is prudent at this time, so I will make a motion to support and, motion to approve this item as recommended within the staff report.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second by Commissioner Jung. We have asked for public comment and taken public comment. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to one. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number 25. And actually, let's say, well, it's a public hearing. So I'm going to open item 25 and the public hearing.
Item 25, public hearing. Appeal of the Washoe County Planning Commission's denial of Master Plan Amendment, case number WMPA 22-0003 for Chocolate Drive, and Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA 22-003 for Chocolate Drive, which sought a master plan amendment to redesignate one parcel totaling 45.51 acres from suburban residential to 40.64 acres of urban residential and 4.87 acres of open space, and a regulatory zone amendment to rezone one parcel totaling 45.51 acres with medium density suburban to 40.64 acres of medium density urban and 4.8 acres of open space. The property owner is Chocolate Group LLC. The appellate, appellant is Petcore Investments LLC. The project is located at Zero Getford Parkway in Sun Valley. The assessor's parcel number is 502-250-09. The Board of County Commissioners shall consider the appeal based on the record and testimony and material submitted to the public hearing. The Board may affirm or reverse the Planning Commission's decision. Should the Board reverse the Planning Commission's decision, the Board may adopt the proposed amendments. If adopted, the master plan amendment will take effect after a determination of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission. If approved, the Board must authorize the chair to sign the resolutions to this effect.
Mr. Bronzick? Haven't been in front of us in a while.
It has been a while.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Chris Bronzick, Washoe County Planning, Senior Planner. Today, we're looking at WMPA 22-3 and WRZA 22-3 Chocolate Drive. This is the appeal. So this is an appeal of the Washoe County Planning Commission's denial of WMPA 22-3 and WRZA 22-3 Chocolate Drive. This sought a master plan amendment to redesignate one parcel totaling 45.51 acres from suburban residential to 40.64 acres of urban residential and 4.87 acres of open space. It also included a regulatory zone of the same parcel with the same acreage allotments from medium density suburban to medium density urban and open space. On April 5th, 2022, the Washoe County Planning Commission held a public hearing for the proposed MPA/RZA. Staff did recommend a motion to approve the MPA/RZA proposal. The motion did fail with a vote of one in favor and six opposed. All members were present, and this did result in a denial of the MPA/RZA request. The parcel is located on the west end of Sun Valley and located within the Sun Valley Character Management Area. So with density, as the site exists currently, it allows for three dwelling units per acre or roughly 136 total units allowed. If, as proposed and if approved, the change would result to 21 dwellings per acre and 853 units allowed. On the left, we see the existing master plan designations. The left shows suburban residential. The right shows urban, urban residential and a sliver of open space between the proposed master plan designation and the existing Red Hill Open Space. Similarly, with this slide for the regulatory zone amendment, on the left, we see the, all pink, which is the medium density suburban. And on the right, we see the brown and yellow, which is the medium density urban proposal with the sliver of open space between the proposed development and Red Hill Open Space. So with this slide, I provided a zoning map of the area. As you can see, medium density urban is not unique to this area. I've provided two yellow arrows that do show additional MDU parcels that contain multifamily that are outside, that are located within the suburban character management area. This proposal is consistent with the master plan and the Sun Valley area plan, which, among other things, provides for a range of housing. If approved, the proposal creates the opportunity for housing that is high density or affordable within the Sun Valley area plan. The suburban character management area, or the SCMA, and the downtown character management area, or the DCMA, are stated within the Sun Valley area plan as designated growth areas within Sun Valley. Additionally, it should be noted that Regional has designated Sun Valley as an area to capture these high-density proposals. As mentioned in a previous slide, there are MDU- As mentioned in a previous slide, there are MDU parcels a quarter of a mile and three-quarters of a mile to the southeast. The Planning Commission was unable to make the following findings for master plan amendment. Finding number one, which is consistency of master plan. Finding number two for compatible land uses. Finding number three, which is response to change of conditions. And finding four, which is availability of facilities. The Planning Commission was also unable to make the following findings for the regulatory zone amendment. Finding number one, which is consistency of master plan. Finding number two for compatible land uses. Finding number three, response to change of conditions. And finding four, availability of facilities. Additionally, two commissioners were unable to make the Sun Valley area plan finding, which states that the amendment will further implement and preserve the vision and character statement that it conforms to the Sun Valley area plan and master plan, and that it will not conflict with the public's health and safety. And that can be found on page four of the BCC staff report for a more detailed analysis of the decisions made. Should the BCC agree with the Planning Commission's decision, the BCC can deny the appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's action. If the BCC disagrees with the decision, you can grant the appeal and reverse the Planning Commission's decision. I provided the recommendations on the slide above, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions about this? Let me start. You said they could not find the finding of availability of facilities. What facilities could they not find for? Because, I mean, it's fairly close to transit. I don't, I'm grappling with this. I'm trying to understand what they couldn't find for. Do you know? And I know I'm not looking for you to answer for them, but was it articulated to you, Mr. Bronzick?
It was articulated during the meeting. It referred to first responders and the availability of EMS, fire. At the end of the day, though, this is a master plan amendment and a regulatory zone amendment. There's no project associated with this, but that was articulated.
Okay. So it had to do with safety, with public facilities, is fire specifically?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any other questions? All right. If there are no other questions for staff, or no questions for staff, I will go ahead and open the public comment.
First up, we have Heidi Soper.
Welcome.
Whoa, I need to grow. Good afternoon. I just found out some information at your lunch break that the new, oh, gosh, what do you want to call it? They're landscaping across the valley off of East Fourth Street in that area to build something, and I just found out there were 500 more apartments. That's 1,000 more cars in Sun Valley. I thought these guys were building 240 apartments. Now I see on the form it's 853. That's 1,700 cars. We're now looking at 2,700 cars, if I understand it correctly. And I want to tell you that on Friday, I went home and made the mistake of not being home by 4:30. It took me 22 minutes to go from Dandini Boulevard to Fourth Street. Back-to-back traffic. We can't handle any more traffic. I had a friend who went north on Sun Valley Boulevard and was telling me the traffic was backed up to the skateboard park and the swimming pool with people waiting to turn left on Seventh Avenue, Seventh Street, to go through to Golden Valley and Lemon Valley. We don't need any more traffic. I live right across the street from this, on Chocolate, and I don't want to look at apartments. I didn't move out there 35 years ago to look at apartments. And now with all these new apartments on my street and across the valley, what happens to our schools? Yeah, and this is just too much. And the recreation for the area that they want to build apartments for is unbelievable. We have people riding horses. We have dirt bikes. We have kids playing. You know, we have animals. Did you know we have eagles in Sun Valley? Where are they going to go? We don't need more apartments. We got enough. And the fire department and REMSA and everything else, can they handle all of that? I don't think so. So anyway, I wanted to voice my opinion, and I know there's people here that have a whole lot more else to say, so I want to thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, we have Chris Wector, and I'm sorry if I said your name wrong. The appellate, so.
Oh, that's the appellate? Okay.
All right. Ryan Rogers, the same. Cindy Martinez.
Hello again, Commissioners. Thank you for the record, Cindy Martinez. I don't live in this neighborhood, but I have traversed back and forth between North Valleys and Sparks, and I do have friends who live in the neighborhood. And I miss the wide-open spaces of Reno that I moved here for with the dew-covered sage smell in the morning. Having said that, I know that that's gone the way of pavement and concrete. And clearly, we do need more affordable housing. We need new, more units for folks to move into. I just wonder if that's the appropriate place for it. I was looking at it on the map, and it's right butt up against a wide-open space. And I think the challenge for government is to balance property rights of private property owners, legitimate public use interest, and creating opportunities for businesses and infrastructure, that sort of thing. Having said that, this board appointed the Planning Commission members who received the information, reviewed it, and I would gather that they engaged in thoughtful consideration of the proposal that was before them. And you entrusted into them the responsibility and introspection to determine whether a project fits with the surrounding community, if it comports with master planning. And it appears to me, as I read this and in my late introduction to this, actually, my friend told me about this last month, is that the Planning Commission said, no, this does not fit with that neighborhood. So I would ask that you would consider that you rely on the expertise that you entrusted to the Planning Commission, who is closest to the project and represents the people in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mark Newman.
Good afternoon, Board. Hope you had a good lunch. For the record, my name is Mark Newman. I am opposed to this for numerous different reasons. If you look at this right here, I drew in, that's Main Sun Valley Drive coming up, and this area right here, they're proposing as being open. This is open because this is a private road, private road, private road, private road, private road. So you're going to have 853 cars that are going to be entering and exiting through Second Street only. If 136, wouldn't be too bad, but you're talking 1,700 vehicles a day on Second Street alone to get to Sun Valley Drive. These areas right here that they're calling already, this was put through through HUD during COVID, and this project has already started. This is going to be 500 low-income apartments. This apartment right here, this complex is right on Sun Valley Drive. This is a short little walk to get to Sun Valley Drive for access to the buses, where they're asking up here, everybody's going to have to walk all the way down Second Street to get to the buses. This is a very, very bad positioning for an apartment complex. It is not needed in Sun Valley. We need to have, houses would not be too bad, but apartments, it's a bad location for it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Suzanne Boyd. Louis Goodoy. Louis, sorry, Goodoy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Louis Goodoy for the record. So I'm just going to reiterate, I don't want to, thank you guys for being here, first of all, and I appreciate you guys have a difficult job to do. So I'm speaking more of a scientist here. So I'm going to reiterate the traffic. I want to also reiterate, one thing, I went away to school, I came back, because this is my community. I chose to move back to Sun Valley, because it is where I was born and raised. One of the things that what Sun Valley is known for is open spaces, and it's being taken away, as they shown on these maps. There's only this one little 45-acre parcel left, you know, pretty much everything else is gone. That's where people recreate. Another thing, I know this is about the rezoning, I'm not trying to, you know, go too far tangential, but for somehow, that used to be a LM-LAM, and now we're here at this point, because it became private, and also now we're at this point, that's something that should be looked at differently, but it is just sad to see. So now scientifically, what I'm going to speak to you about is the fact that I think we can agree on three statements, and bear with me. One plus one equals two. Two plus two equals four. A hydrogen and a hydrogen plus an oxygen makes water. So I say that scientifically, because those are facts. One of the things that was brought up is there is a native species on there, Aragonium robustum, that has been identified by the state Nevada as, and sort of endangered, as a protected species, and it is found in three spots in here in Washoe County, over on the foothills of Virginia City, on Peavine Mountain, and on Red Hill, here what we're looking at. 45 acres is a large piece of land, and one of the things, there's a study that was done by James Moorfield in 2000, this was in 2000, that identified that some of the factors that affect that species is development. Development has a negative impact on that. And back then, that was in 2000, back then, developments weren't around Dandini area, Red Hill Loop, or any of those. So we're looking at developments that are occurring around there now. There was a study done by Professor, undergraduate student at the University of Nevada Reno, who, his undergraduate student noted that if with development, you do have a negative impact on this Aragonium robustum. As well, NatureServe, which is a nonprofit organization, has identified Aragonium robustum as being endangered. It is not on the state list or is not federally protected, because at these times, the plant has not been under development, under this, what we're affected, what's been affected now by development. So I just want to reiterate that. One other thing, as an EMT also, there's a rule that we have, it's called the golden hour. If you don't get medical care to somebody that has an emergency thing within that golden hour, the life expectancy or any treatment or good outcomes has declined exponentially. That is going to be, as we mentioned, EMS is going to be taxed so hard, and that golden rule is going to be greatly affected. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sandra Easley. Carol Burns? Oh, I'm sorry, Sandra.
She's coming. It's all good. Take your time.
Take your time.
Not that much time.
Okay.
There we are. Welcome.
There you go. Thank you. Hello, everybody. I just have a list of stuff just to go. First of all, I had to get earthquake insurance, because they have a crater out on Second Street, so that's one thing. I have allergies, and that's like, and my cat do for $700 a month, so who's going to pay that? I'm, I'm sorry. We have people walking dogs, the horses, the ATVs, all that kind of stuff. We like to watch the birds. At nighttime, I'm an astrologer kind of person, so I like to look up, and I don't want to see lights with their parking lots halfway lit, and it'd just be gross. Oh, boy. And we actually live on Fourth and Chocolate. There's one trailer next to us, but it's the fourth one, and then us, and it'd be like that, and kind of like that. I lost it. So if Chocolate is a private drive, are they just going to do like Fourth, Fifth, Getford? Are they just going to do that and leave the rest of it just like that, a dirt? I'm always wondering about that. They're probably also stated there's a need for closer development and affordable housing options in the area, so why does it have to be Sun Valley? If they do that, they have 136 units. If there's one person, 136, a man and a woman, or alternates, that'd be 272. If you have one kid, that'd be 408 people. If you have the 852 units, you have one, 853, two people, 1,706. Three people with one kid, be 2,559 people, and if you keep going on, that's a lot of people. And if you have one car, that's a lot. Two cars, even more. And there's just not any room for any of it. I don't know. I remember in 1988, I flew here, and there was, the airplane pilot says, Sun Valley has more felonies than Dade County, Florida, and that was 1988. So I don't want extra people moving in here and trying to walk around and do other things. But yeah, appreciate it if y'all said no, but thank you anyway. Thanks.
Turn on your mic. Put your mic on. Ms. Burns is approaching. Good. Welcome, Ms. Burns.
My name is Carol Burns, and I'm a resident of Sun Valley and a member of the Sun Valley Citizens Advisory Board. I'd like to read a little bit of the Sun Valley Master Plan to you that was written in September 2010. The vision, managed growth and its related imports in Sun Valley, focusing on preserving the surrounding public lands and the quality of the built environment while respecting private property rights. The character statement, the community expresses a strong desire to manage growth levels and traffic patterns, so that the traffic congestion and the related air quality do not reach undesirable levels. Under one of our goals here, we have maintain open vistas of the surrounding ridges and hills and minimize the visual impact of hillside developments. Structures shall be, shall be located to, excuse me, located to eliminate or minimize silhouettes against the skyline. Everybody's talked about the traffic, and we are trying to get a traffic count. We had one in 2020. We're trying to find out if there was one done yet this year. We haven't had any affirmation on that. Barbara Morris is here. She sent you a letter. She has an acreage up there on Chocolate Drive, which she has horses, and she's very concerned if there is an impact of families and people, that their horses will be disturbed, obviously. I think we all know children. We also have a lot of the, what do you call them? Networks and things up on the hillside that people constantly are trying to get into. I thought that the development that they approved in 2015 was low-cost housing. That was done when we had. That was done when we had no tabs, nobody was, never knew anything about it, and I don't believe that we want more. As you can see, we have elderly people, and it's a residential rural community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, that's everybody that is in chambers, but I do have two letters that were submitted, one from Barbara Morris, and one from Rita Sampson-Gabbard, that will be placed on the record.
In support or denial?
In support of upholding.
Okay, thank you. Okay? Thank you. We'll bring it back to the board. Ms. Barrett, would you guys, you guys want to say anything?
Hello, I'm Ryan Rogers with Pedcore Investments, and I have Chris Wechter here with Kim Lee Horn. And I'm going to quickly kind of go through, I know we had supplied a PowerPoint presentation for you. I'll kind of blow through that fairly quickly, just to kind of get the main points. I'm sure you've probably seen that. And then we'll supply some responses to the comments that we've heard today, and show you the solutions that we have for that. First of all, I think you've kind of heard about the--
Hold on just a second. Madam Clerk, would you give me, I believe we give 15 minutes? 10? 10 minutes, okay? Give me 10 minutes on the clock.
Sure.
Okay, proceed.
Okay, I'm sure you've seen the condition, it's a 45-acre parcel. It's three-quarters of a mile long, or on Chocolate Drive, from Second Avenue to Fifth Avenue. It's less than a quarter mile away from Lewis Allen Elementary, and less than a half mile from Sun Valley Boulevard. It is within the suburban character management area. And through working with the planning staff and Washoe Parks and Open Space, we have agreed to setting aside dedicated space that would allow for access to Red Hill and the Open Space. So one of the things that we can talk to about comments, we have solutions for, is that right now, this is a private property. So technically, anybody who's using this, or accessing the open space behind it, is trespassing. You just don't have a homeowner that's there to keep everybody off, and they actually have tried. They call quite often for dumping that is occurring in this area, to try and have abandoned vehicles removed, to have people taken off the property if they can. There was a squatter that's been on there, that they've been trying to get off. So technically, someone could come in here and put a fence on the whole thing, and let nobody through here. And so what we're proposing to do is that we are going to work, and we have been working with Washoe Parks, to both dedicate, make a parcel of this open space in this amendment. And in addition to that, when we go through the site plan process, which you'll hear quite frequently here, we haven't started that process yet. So we have a whole bunch more meetings that would go into what streets we're going to do, what infrastructure we're going to approve, because we will be doing that. That will be down the road, and there will be other meetings in front of planning that we will have to approve those steps. But for this, we will also be working to set aside at least a portion of the northern portion of the site, that would be dedicated access, and most likely a portion on the southern part of the site also. So that would guarantee access from this side of town to Red Hill through this property, which they currently don't have. Current site photos, again, you can kind of see the dumping in this area. I know that, you know, people aren't always happy apartments coming into where they're located, but I will tell you that there were people that were, are public hearing, that were supportive of what we were doing. They're supportive because of this condition. They know that when we come in, we're going to be upgrading the infrastructure here. We're going to have a lot of money invested in putting a very nice product here. And in that, we're going to want streets that are paved, which would get rid of the dust that we were hearing about. We had a mom with her kids who said, "I'm excited for it, because I want safer streets for myself and my children," and that's what we would be providing. In addition, you can see that it is used as a dumping ground, people will go down, out there and dump their trash. And so with our development there, which has onsite management, five days a week at a minimum, also has onsite management, I mean onsite maintenance crew. So you wouldn't have any more of that occurring on the site either. This would be 240 units of affordable housing, and I know we've heard a lot about the unit count here. I can tell you two things. One is that with the topography of this site, it would be impossible to do the maximum allowed under the code, because of that topography. The second thing is, we'd be limited to two stories. And you could put it on the record here, we won't do anything more than 240 units for this development. This is going to be a HUD financed development, and that's about at the max of what we could get the proper mortgage for. In addition, I have solidified that number by my application with Washoe County Home Consortium, which we were awarded $200,000 of home funds for this proposed development at 240 units. So I wouldn't get any more funding for anything more than that, so I would be capped at that limit, the number of units that I'll be doing moving forward from here. Again, as has been shown before, we're half a mile from a multifamily development that was approved in 2015, that's close to here. And that just goes to show that there's precedent for this area, for allowing this kind of amendment to come through. And I think you'll see that, when it was talked about us working with planning staff, and those people that have been put in the positions in order to review all this material, we worked extensively with staff, and working through what we were doing, what's been done in the past, and what we're proposing. And I think that's exactly why we got staff's recommendation for approval on both of these, when we went to Planning Commission, because they believed we had met every single point for the ability to have this be approved. And I'll have Chris going to go through some of the technical stuff here.
Sure. So as Chris Bondrick has mentioned, this parcel is being, in master plan, being changed from suburban residential to urban residential and open space. In addition, on the regulatory zone, it's being changed from medium-density suburban to medium-density urban and open space. As far as the specifics, it is 41.51 acres of medium-density suburban, changed to 40.64 acres of medium-density urban, to sustain the medium density for the area. Also, it splits zones of the property, which you can see in that figure, a little bit more clearly, with the amount of open space that's dedicated, as requested by the Washoe County Parks and Open Space, of that distinguished buffer, as well as open space to access the surrounding Red Hill Open Space. It also allows for medium-density multifamily, with changing this zoning and master plan. As Ryan had mentioned, the project is in conformance. Staff did find that it meets all of the master plan, regulatory zone, and Sun Valley Area Plan findings, and that was said in their staff report, as well as our appeal. I'd like to point out a couple things. The Sun Valley Area Plan states that it is intended to manage growth and development in a manner that includes a range of low, medium, and high-density housing opportunities, and affordable housing, in which this project is. And the project also does exist within the suburban character management area, and it has been identified as a designated growth area in Sun Valley. From the Washoe County Master Plan, there is a sense in there that says, "The county will promote mixed-use residential-commercial development in the medium and high-density areas, especially in the Sun Valley region, and provide incentives for projects that include a specific number of housing units affordable to low- and moderate-income households." This project is affordable, and it is specifying specifically 240 units maximum, and so it abides by this statement here. As Ryan had mentioned, we extensively coordinated with several different public agencies, including the Washoe County Regional Transportation Commission on all traffic concerns. We have taken all these different districts' comments, we've implemented them into the master plan amendment and regulatory zone that we've so carefully put together collaboratively. We came up with the 4.87 acres of open space buffer. We've coordinated with planning and engineering, and then, as Ryan mentioned also, we have gotten the Home Consortium funds awarded. It's $200,000 for this specific project, 240 units. And we've also coordinated with other public agencies, like the Sun Valley GID, to supply water, sewer, and garbage, and the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency for conformance in the future.
Yeah, and to that, also, we've reached out to the school system, who indicated that the 240 units wouldn't be a problem. So some of those issues, we have solutions for, and having already talked with these entities, and have had nobody raise any problems with what we were proposing out of any of those entities. To tell you a little bit about Pedcore, we've been around for 34 years doing affordable housing. We have over 30,000 units in 21 different states, and I will be here every step of the way. We, after we finish construction, it's Pedcore Management that would manage the development. As a result of getting the tax credits for affordable housing, we're typically, even if we wanted to get rid of it, we would have to hold it for typically up to 30 years. And so, and even that, we're 34 years in, the first developments we ever did 34 years ago, we still own in our portfolio, that's why we're up to over 30,000 units. So we like to be a partner in the community, and because we're going to be here for a long time. Sorry, I'm going to skip over here. We had some pictures of our product. Again, these are samples. They're samples in that we were trying to work with what the surroundings were like, and also with what the staff planning wanted us to do. So it doesn't necessarily represent what would go here, because we would be presenting smaller two-story buildings that are spread across three-quarters of a mile. So it would not be a dense community, it would be a less dense-looking community that's spread across that space. Our philosophy again is to be good neighbors, and I'm sorry, I forgot my glasses, so I kind of have to read off of my notes here. But, you know, this is the first of many meetings that we're going to have, and we will be working with staff for the site review process. And I can tell you, some of the things about streets are inaccurate. We will have more than one access point to this development. It's three-quarters of a mile long. We have been in discussions on which roads those would be, and how to pave it, but we would pave and upgrade any of the roads we can, which also satisfies, you know, helping the neighborhood from that respect, and response times. So it provides a benefit. And again, to the units, you know, we aren't going above 240 units, so that would not be an issue that we would have. We appreciate your time today, we're here for any questions you have, and we hope that you, after considering this information that we provided, that you would approve our appeal. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Jung, before I let you chime in, let me ask Mr. Edwards some things, so that I can get this, understand this. This is an RZA, Mr. Edwards, but they have self-limited to 240 dwelling units. How do we, how do we work that back? Because this is basically just a rezon of a property, we're not entering into a developmental agreement.
Yeah, you don't. You have to either just accept them, you know, at their word, at the podium, or come back with the development agreement, you know, like has happened in some other projects that caps it via development agreement. But you can't condition the NPA or the RZA on that representation from the podium. In the future, if a project comes in, you're certainly free to sit there and say, "Remember when you said at the podium, you were going to do 240? Well, we're going to hold you to that."
So we have that opportunity to do it at that time.
You do.
Okay. Okay, one more thing. Commissioners, I just, I did some math, and this is the same way that we would have dealt with any other project that would come in before us. This is 45.51 acres. An acre is 43,560 square feet. If you take that and multiply that by 45.51, and then divide it by 240, it's 8,260 square feet per dwelling unit. That's a, that's a common lot size, actually, for a single-family dwelling unit. That is a, that is a common lot size. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to advocate either for or against, I'm just, I'm laying out the facts. Commissioner Jung, floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, and thank you for clarifying the record, and I would like to, for the, if the commission has the appetite, I want to give you a little bit of history about Chocolate Drive, and some issues and money we've spent down there. Chocolate Drive is privately owned at this time, and nobody would sign up for a special assessment district to get that road paved. We have trouble getting waste management down there, we have trouble getting emergency services down there, we have trouble getting NV Energy refused to go down there in the winter to turn on power years ago, and there was zero appetite from the constituents who lived there to pay a special assessment district, so that the county could go in and they could pay us back. Zero, zero. I mean, the big fat null, nothing in the data file for that. Chocolate Drive is a known hazard in this area, it is, if you don't have a four-wheel drive, even Chitty Chitty Bang Bang has some trouble getting down there, and that's an all-wheel-drive car. So when you, when we have the snows and the mud, et cetera. I don't want to go after the developer here in terms of promises on the record, because they mean nothing at this point. All we can hold them to is what the staff has recommended, and I'm going to tell you why I'm in support of this, and I think you guys already knew that when I talked to you at our cab meeting. Again, nobody is going to pay for the sidewalks. Half of the people that are here right now don't even live in this district, I can tell you, don't live in this neighborhood. So if we want to, if you are that interested in preserving this open space, maybe we should do a blanket special assessment district over all of Sun Valley, and see what kind of money we can collect to get this paved, because the county's not paying for it, it's a private road. Secondly, the road agreement that was sort of set on the record here, I will ask you, I won't be here when the rest of these entitlements come through, please hold them to that road agreement, or all of you taxpayers who don't live in this area will be subsidizing us out there on Chocolate Drive. I can't believe we've kept it that long as it is. But that was, that is also a choice of private property rights. People said we don't want to pay for it, we're okay with you not being able to get down here unless you have a quad. Wouldn't work for me, I have a different expectation. Also, it was brought up about first responders, and how many calls we get, and let me just tell you something, who do you think pays for those first responders? Property taxpayers. Commercial, oh, commercial property taxpayers? That's 8%. That's 8% they pay, not 3%. All the rest of the people here that are in single-housing dwellings. So if you want to maintain the sustainability of your REMZA, as we've argued about with annexation as well, we could give this to the city. We could easily dump this out into the city, if this is what you guys think is going to help you manage providing healthcare services to my Sun Valley residents. 99.99999% of those REMZA calls is how my constituency accesses healthcare. Right, wrong, or indifferent, it is. And we've tried a lot of outreach to try to, with Obamacare, and Minute Clinics, we're actually, access to HS--
CH.
Community Health Alliance opened up a Minute Clinic there, because of the real need in that fabulous valley, to start changing human behavior, to access healthcare in a way that is not such a strain on our fire protection district, as well as our ambulance service. Another issue that I want to talk to my constituents about, is the demand of, our freeways are heavy, our traffic is heavy, I hear you. But the only way you're going to get more freeways and stoplights, and we can look at 7th, I do want that staff to look that up, those left-turn lanes at 7th during high time, don't allow it anymore. Or have a different timer on there to go 7th Avenue, not street, there's no streets in Sun Valley, they're avenues. That can easily be remedied, has nothing to do with this. But I do have, I do, I do believe you have a point with that. But the only way we're going to get the expansion of the freeways, as well as the one expansion that you fought like mad about to go to the southeast connector, which is still coming, that will relieve that too. But we don't build freeways that are eight lanes across 20 years before we need the eight lanes. You know why? Because it's too expensive to maintain, and you never even needed it. That is just the way we do development in the developed world, across the world. I'm glad that the applicant mentioned that all this access that you're having on Chocolate Drive is illegal, you shouldn't be on private property. Now, yes, I believe they have a responsibility to enforce that trespass, but you have no right to be on anybody else's private property. And if I own that property, I'd be there every day to have you arrested for being on my property. We've spent so much money, from Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful, to waste management grants, to clean up that property, and all of the area of Sun Valley where people love to dump, and go quadding and four-wheeling, et cetera, illegally. So with that being said, I am going to make a motion to approve this. I'm not happy with the Planning Commission again, and honestly, I know somebody said we should listen to the Planning Commission, I think we should get rid of the Planning Commission, it's just another layer of government that makes these guys rich, because they get to bill out for, go into these community meetings that they didn't stand up for and do what's right, according to our master plan. So I will make the motion to, as written in the staff report, to do the master plan amendment, because I do believe it has the triple bottom line. It's environmentally the right thing to do, the asthma that is so high in Sun Valley, I would argue, has a lot to do with the unpaved roads. Number two, it economically makes sense, because I know that Sun Valley cannot continue to provide the tax base to receive the healthcare they're receiving via, vis a vis REMZA, and the fire department. And finally, I think this is the best thing for this community, because I want that road paved, and I want sidewalks there. If you can't afford the sidewalks, I have been very successful the last 15 years, going through the CDBG grant process, all by myself, by the way, to get sidewalks all around Sun Valley. They're perfect for that area. So I know you're mad at me, but this is the right thing to do as a global approach to how we handle the matter, and I promised to onboard your new commissioner to let her know, maybe you can change your mind, I don't know, I seriously doubt it. We know that we need housing in Sun Valley that is affordable. Now, I will bounce one more thing, and I will be watching this when I'm gone. I want to see these HUD grants going to, I don't know, Commissioner Hill's district, Lucy's district, Hartung's district, Herman's district. Seems like we always pack them into my district. We have represented and shown you how it can be done, but I do want you commissioners that are left over here, and I will be reminding you, start taking them in your own district, stop forcing them into mine. But I do believe this is a great project, I trust this builder, they have a record-- they have-- They have a record, they have a record as a national model, and I know we're not supposed to get into this, but they also have promised, and I will get that in writing one way or the other, that they're going to have onsite 24/7 security, which is one of the biggest reasons why people don't like multifamily. They're afraid everybody's going to act wild. And another thing I would like to ask my Sun Valley residents, who you know I love you more than anything, and I would do anything for you, please stop going and creating this idea that multifamily, for some reason, is lowbrow. I don't know a single person up here who didn't live in an apartment or a trailer coming up. I lived in both, very proudly, very happily. I'm sure the neighbors didn't love it, but I had a right to be there because the owner of that property made those apartments. Trailer, too, I lived in a trailer. And it's all part of meeting all those levels for people to have a dwelling and have a chance, because this is HUD 2, which I don't think people understand, they don't have the barrier. You can have a felony and move in there. You can have bad deposits. How many of you have had bad deposits experience? Yeah, everybody's had that. You, this will be a path for your kids and grandkids. And that's all I have. That's my impassioned plea. I make the motion, and I stand by it.
Second.
I'm a liar.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Under discussion, yes, Commissioner Jung, I did live in a trailer, didn't live in a stick-frame house until I was a teenager. I, I get it, I understand completely, and have lived in apartments also. Anybody else? Commissioner Lucy? Oh, I'm sorry.
Chairman, thank you. You know, after hearing the presentation this afternoon and hearing the pleas from the community, I absolutely do support Commissioner Jung in her, her continued support for Chocolate Drive. I know that that drive well, driven it a few, quite a few times, and know how, it's quite a state of disrepair that is in. And being that it is a privately-owned street from Fifth down to Second Street, there are challenges for any individual to go and utilize that street. Any improvement in that area would be dramatically beneficial to the community. And as Commissioner Jung pointed out, transportation does not precede development, development precedes transportation. And you need, you have to have a need to be there, and there is now going to be a need to be there. But I would absolutely, wholeheartedly follow her and her concerns about making sure that those roads are improved. I would like to see secondary access down off of, off of Second Street into the community, make sure that there is adequate and equal flow, that it's not piled up on Getford or on, on Fourth Avenue to create, you know, hindering situations for the Sun Valley Boulevard. But we do talk about growth in this community, and you look to, just to the directly west of Red Hill, which is the Red Hill open space, that is owned by Ladera Ranch, which is currently owned by Lennar Homes, and will be expanding, I'm assuming, to the hills of that, that area as well, and have every right to be so. And when you do the math, chairman, underneath your, which you pointed out very eloquently, that under that 45 acres, 240 units, it's one acre, it's one house, or five units per acre, not the seven, not even the seven that they're currently allowed under. And so I'm, I'm in support of this, as long as they are, as they've stated to be, that very smart and developer, I'm in support of it. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. And I would add, and this is, this is just because we, this is what we allow. I'm not telling you I like it, but we allow lot averaging, which means that you've got third-acre dwelling units on 8,000-square-foot lots, because they get to take the roads out, they get to take the easements out, they get to take the drainage out, they get to take the restrained or constrained parcels out, and which, which means that you get much more density. And we've seen that all over the county. I'm not crazy about it. I would love to see that changed, but these are, these are 8,000-square-foot lots, which I will tell you, they are actually larger than the lots that are going in in Sparks right next to my house, which is south of La Pasada. So, any other comments from the board? Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Vice Chair Hill. We have taken public comment, we have made comments ourselves. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Motion carries four to one. Okay? All right. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number 26.
Item 26 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during the individual action item, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you. Madam, would you please not interrupt our meeting? Thank you, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
First up, we have Mark Newman.
Mr. Newman. Welcome.
Again, good evening, good afternoon. For the record, Mark Newman. I also wanted to thank Commissioner Jung, I forgot to say it earlier when I made public comment this morning, that she paid for, got the money for us to be able to do Zoom and have this at our cab meetings in Sun Valley. I forgot to mention that, and I'd like to thank her and appreciate that. Sun Valley needed that. And it's sorry that you guys all decided on apartments. It would have been a lot better to have single-family homes, same, maybe the same amount of homes or even less, but Sun Valley really needs housing, affordable housing that people, young people can buy. And I know, there's a ton of apartments, and you go anywhere within Washoe County, every single apartment says immediate openings. Just at lunch, I hear on the radio, the apartments are looking for people so bad, they're advertising on the radio. We didn't need more apartments. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you, sir.
Wayne Gordon.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Wayne Gordon. I'd like my comments put on the record, please. Voting is probably our most important responsibility and duty as Americans citizens. But what if we believed that it doesn't, our votes don't count, or isn't counted the same as other people's votes? I first registered to vote in 1968, just after the election of 1968, because you were required to be 21 then. And I was proud to be there so I could vote in probably, I think, every election since then, including Sonoma City Council, which was kind of small, but it was part of my duty and responsibility, and I made sure to be available, I think, every time, except, I think I missed one small election somewhere along the line. I always believed that our elections were fair and honest. And I heard things in 1960 about Dallas and Chicago having problems, but I wasn't necessarily. In 2000, 2004, and 2016, we saw the Republicans win each of those elections, and the Democrats, in each case, come out and tell us they were fraud elections. They didn't, they weren't right. They're still saying it. Hillary said it just a few weeks ago. I watched the 2020 election, not really closely, as far as physically close, but I noted a lot of things that did not look right to me, and was questioned the outcome, the way it was counted. A lot of things appeared hinky, both in Nevada and nationally. At the end of 2021, I made the decision I was going to come before this body because of the things that were done by the legislature and what were done in this county. And while I couldn't come the first couple of weeks because of perception that I was ill and not sure about COVID and all that crap, I've come in pretty regular basis since then. You're probably tired of seeing and hearing from me. But we still have the same process, problem. A lot of people believe our elections are bad, and if they believe it, they might act on it. We have to change that perception. I actually had a lot more, but my time's up.
Thank you, sir.
Does nobody else sign down?
Okay, we will close public comment, we will bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, that now takes us to item number 27.
Item 27 is commissioners and county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have any such items?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, commissioners, anyone? All right, we will close item number 27. Thank you for indulging us today, and we are adjourned.